All this meeting back to order at 6:36 PM. We are in executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation and pending litigation. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation. While in-person attendance, the members of the public will be permitted, and a forum of the school committee will be in person. This meeting is concurrently being presented through Google Meet and/or by live broadcast by NORCAM to allow the public and any school committee members who cannot attend to participate. Okay, welcome everyone. We're going to do this like we did the last time where we're going to have public comment to begin with, but we do have the Hood School joining us at 7 o'clock, so if we're not done with public comment by then, we'll just pause it and then we can pick it up afterward. So, we open with public comment if anybody has any thoughts. Three minutes, Mr. Yul?
Yes.
If you want to share it.
This is for the TV, I believe, yes. Jeff Yul, 427 Park Street. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Jeffrey Friedman and Noel Rudolph for being on the board. We have a new board now. It's different views, different perspectives, different additional thoughts on direction for the school, I would believe. I think, I just want to follow up on something that I mentioned the last, is it two meetings ago now, or is it the last meeting? Well, last meeting that I attended, let's put it that way, with regard to the three-minute limitation on speech at these school committee meetings. I believe that there are many people who are not necessarily able to articulate their thoughts in a three-minute format, and some people are intimidated by that kind of a format. Now, town meeting has five minutes. That's what they have there. Perhaps, maybe that can be done here. And the reason for this is that the purpose of the comment is not really to have a conversation, but just give us an opportunity to speak. And so, I'd like for you to reconsider your time limit, either eliminate it so that people can articulate what they have to say, as long as they don't become repetitive, and/or at least extend it to five minutes, so people can not be pressured in such a short minute, a short timeframe. I would think that if the shoes were reversed and you had that rule for all your committee members, you wouldn't get much done under those circumstances. So, please consider that, and as I said, I passed out a constitution last time. The constitution does not talk about limited free speech. It talks about free speech. So, thank you.
Dr. Yul?
Drew DePatty, 6 Flint Street. I want to thank Dr. Daley for inviting me to the DEI Forum last week. I was able to see firsthand just how radical the school district has become. From the very beginning, the DEI program was born out of radicalism. As a response to the George Floyd death in 2020, a small group of 100 radical activists out of a town population of 15,000 met with Dr. Daley in June that year and created the political pressure to get the anti-racism resolution passed by the school committee, which ushered in the DEI program. George Floyd was killed in police custody in Minnesota, not North Reading. He was a violent convicted felon who served many years in prison. He was intoxicated on fentanyl and had recently used metaanphetamines at the time of his death. Now, he is a catalyst for major social upheaval in North Reading. For those who want to keep national politics out of the North Reading schools, you're two years too late. A key component of the meeting from June 2020 was the Hornets for Hate group in town, a far-left extremist organization that has attacked me and my family in the most vicious and hateful ways. The group is now relied upon by Dr. Daley as a key DEI partner of the school. This is a group that regularly spews hatred on their Facebook page, including attacking my wife for allowing herself to be, quote, "used." Members of the group didn't like a strong, independent, intelligent black woman voicing her opinion. Doris wandered a little too far off their plantation for their comfort. I also learned Wednesday night that the school proudly says, quote, "All genders are welcome." Notice the word "all." They don't say "both genders are welcome." That is what they do with your kids. They embed these assumptions into language and teaching so it does not become a point of debate. They want it to be fact that there are more than two genders. Of course, in this situation, I personally have knowledge that science is real, and so I know that there are only two genders. But that's not what your kids are learning. This is a definition of indoctrination. It's time to wake up. And what happens when your kids have the courage, or even just the intellectual curiosity to challenge this radical orthodoxy? They will get treated like I did at the DEI Forum. That night, the DEI coordinator, in the most arrogant and presumptuous way, said in reference to me that I'm, quote, "not there yet." In other words, I have not adopted their radical worldview yet, but she's going to work really hard to make sure I do. After all, that's her job, and that's why she gets paid with taxpayer money. Also, if you don't agree with their radical views, you are told you need to be educated, which is actually worse than being attacked with accusations of racism and hate because it has a cultural Marxist commandment embedded. You have not adopted the proper opinions. That must be fixed. Everything you hear in the news about what is happening in the schools across the country, about how it's just a conspiracy, that was completely debunked in this room on Wednesday night. It is a politically motivated disinformation to deny what is happening. Radical gender curriculum for kids at a very young age, the 1619 Project, twisting U.S. history to fit a left-wing narrative, radical racial curriculum, including anti-racism and white privilege. It goes on and on. Now, I don't think the members of this school board are radicals, but I wouldn't know because you never say anything of substance on these important issues during these meetings. But it's not enough to just not be a radical yourself. You need to be anti-radical in these times. It's time to speak out against these policies that are way out of step with the politically moderate community of North Reading. It's time to take back your power and rein in Dr. Daley and the other staff in this district that have taken it in a direction that would be shocking to most North Reading residents. To the residents of North Reading, I know many of you moved here because of the school system. I also know it's tough to face reality sometimes, but the reality is, the school system has been driven into the ground since June 2020. It's not going back to the great school system it was unless you rise up and fight back for the next generation. That means investing time in understanding what is happening in the schools. That means calling all school board members on their phones and letting them know your views. That means scheduling meetings with Dr. Daley to tell him to his face that he is way out of line. That means organizing at your kids' sporting events on weekends and coming together as large groups to these school board meetings to rein in the school board members who have chosen not to be anti-radical. The radicals have moved like a tsunami since June 2020. It's time to clean up the mess, save our kids, save our school, and save our community.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Pass it back to them.
Good evening. Janine Largent, 11 Hillside Road. You know, again, Drew always inspires me to want to speak, and I, tonight I sit here and I think, you know, what is it that is happening that has gotten these federal programs so deep? I know we're taking them for money. I understand that philosophy, that it comes with money, and so we didn't create it. But I think about our constitution and our founding fathers, you know, the idea that all men were created equal, endowed by a Creator with certain inalienable rights, among them, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And somewhere around 250 years, people have come here from all over the world, every kind of race, religion, have come here. And not a perfect place, a place that's always been sort of evolving to include women and blacks and, you know, all different kinds of religions. But suddenly, we've got this radical ideology that, you know, it's time for America to be more like the rest of the world, not a shining city upon the hill. I'm just wondering, do we still believe that our founding documents were unique and special? Do we still believe in the American dream? Do we still believe in American exceptionalism? Because it looks like every single one of you hate this country and everything about it, and are allowing yourselves to be utilized to disassemble it, deconstruct it, and replace it with some global ideology, some global worldview that eliminates everything that the founders created. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, can you pass it back to them?
I'm Luca Antillani, 10 D.R. Run Drive. I was at the DEI conference last Wednesday as well. I think that I can probably speak for a lot of North Reading parents that if they knew exactly what was going on, they would not be comfortable with the direction of our school And I think it's very important that the, what I think is the vocal minority of that conference of last Wednesday, because I think a lot of what was spoken that night was not representative of the community. You know, my wife, I filled my wife in when I got home that night, and, you know, we don't want to have to look for other options for schooling, but if this is the direction that the school system's going, I can assure you that a lot of parents will look strongly about moving out of these public schools because this direction is completely, it's just kind of, it's going down a slippery slope, and the whole 2025 plan is kind of, it's pretty radical. It's very radical, and it's, I don't think it's going to be, you know, very helpful for our community at large. I didn't, not one, not one time last Wednesday did math, science, technology come up. It was all about race, gender, and all this ideology that's kind of seeped into our social fabric, and I don't know what's going to happen, but it's, and I don't even know what the right answer is, to be honest with you, because we do need some of it, but to focus so much on it is doing the kids, I think, a lot, a big disservice, and that's all I have to say. I think it's just not representative of the whole community of what they want. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Buckley, could I just share something? Sure, go ahead, Dr. Daley.
I just wanted to adjust, Eric Lee. We did have a forum on Wednesday night. The purpose of that forum was to discuss one of the three big rocks, which was diversity, equity, inclusion. So, NFRPS 2025 has three big rocks. These are our areas of focus and improvement. One is diversity, equity, inclusion. One is student services, and one is teaching and learning. So, the entire plan will be shared out for public comment in the coming weeks, but the reason why we didn't delve too much into some of the other topics the other night is because that forum was specifically about diversity, equity.
Drop down right there. Hang on.
Hold on, Patrick. We just lost. Time to head to swap out my computer. Hold on.
We will pause.
My ankle's pretty bad.
What's that?
Yeah. It's pretty bad. I should bring my laptop next time.
Okay, Patrick. You should be all set.
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to clarify that NFRPS 2025 has three big rocks, just like it always has.
Dr. Daley, can you hear us?
We've had student services, we have teaching and learning, we have diversity, equity, inclusion, and the purpose of the forum on Wednesday night was to specifically talk about the diversity, equity, inclusion big rock, which is why that was the focus of what we were doing and the discussion the other night.
Okay. Hang on, Patrick. We're trying to get you on the main speaker. Can I just turn my computer sound out for now, Michael, or?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's probably like three minutes here, but yeah, I'll try to ask.
Okay. Is there a microphone on there? Patrick, can you hear us? Patrick, can you hear us?
I'm hooked in now. I can hear you. It was last weekend.
Okay. How about now?
He can speak now.
I don't think he's getting a mic. Dr. Daley, can you hear us now?
You're all set, Patrick.
So, we have, you should only have one computer on. No, Noel's just signed in, so we've got to make sure everyone's volume is off and muted, except for one computer.
Yep. You should be all set.
Okay. You can continue, Dr. Daley.
I'll just, I'll just state it again. I'm sorry for people that have heard it three times, but the forum that we had the other night, NFRPS has three big rocks. One is teaching and learning, one is student services, one is diversity, equity, inclusion. The focus of the forum on last week was on diversity, equity, inclusion, which is why the majority of the conversation obviously is about that topic and not about math and other things. We are in no way only focusing on DEI. The purpose of the big rocks, as I've explained and I will share again, when we share out the entire document for public comment, which will go to teachers, it'll go to students, it will go to families. The purpose of a big rock is to focus on something that the schools have identified as an area that needs improved and that needs more work. So, we certainly are focusing on all of our curriculum areas under the teaching and learning strand, but obviously, the DEI strand is going to mostly focus on DEI. I take umbrage with the challenge that these are radical ideas. These are things that are happening across the state in every school, and I think talking about, you know, working on curriculum, working on diversifying our workforce, improving equity for students to have access to devices, I think the majority of the community does support that, and all of the forums that we've had in the past have been open to everyone, and hundreds of people did comment and come, and I believe we do have the majority. And the public, the public comment feedback will substantiate that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Mr. Yul?
I have a question. With the press invited to North Reading?
Thank you. Thank you. My question is, was the press invited to this forum? Was it, such as the North Reading transcript?
Yeah. Dr. Daley, who was invited to the forum?
I'm sorry. I haven't heard anything you said.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Oh, I asked.
The question was, was the press invited to the forum? So, more broadly, who was invited to the forum?
The forum was open to anyone with children in the schools, and if anyone had, what I said, was anyone who wanted to be invited, who had a question, was able to reach out to me, and everyone who reached out and asked if they could attend was allowed to attend.
Okay.
We're not, there's absolutely nothing being hidden or held back. This is part of many things, and it's very personal. We shared a lot of personal stories, and I shared a lot of personal stories, and we purposely did not want to have a virtual forum that evening. We purposely didn't do this the past two years because we didn't want to do it virtually. We didn't want to have people great enough to come forward and tell their personal story be hijacked by the possibility of someone on a keyboard or saying something. So, that was a decision I made, and I stand by it. There will be other events that will be virtual, that will be accessible to anyone who's concerned with COVID or any other issue, but we believe that that night was an in-person night, and it was open to anyone who wanted to come. And like I said, there were people that reached out and asked if they could come, and they didn't have children in the school, and they were invited, so.
Okay. Any other public comment? Mrs. Largent, you've already spoken. What's, is there a specific question, or I just don't want to keep going around a second time. Was there a specific question? Yep, go ahead.
Yul has found a question.
Correct. He asked a question. Do you have a question? What's the question?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Good evening again. Janine Largent, 11 Hillside Road. So, my question, actually, I guess, is to Mr. Daley. Your comment that this is going on everywhere, I'm just wondering what prompted North Reading to do it?
Dr. Daley, did you hear the question?
I believe the question was, what prompted us to make DEI a big rock? And I'll share this out in greater detail, and I'll give more information when we share out the full, the full plan, but essentially, we are, we believe that this work is important work that needs to be done. We believe that there are issues around equity throughout the state. There are laws that we need to follow. I heard someone earlier referring to, there's only two genders. Well, that's not what the law states in the state of Massachusetts. So, we need to be respectful of what the law states, what the law follows, and we're going to make sure that we are respectful of the students and staff who are in our buildings, who identify as transgender, non-binary, and so that's very important. And so, we had students, and some of you I know in the room were a part of those calls last year. We had a forum for visioning to help plan and develop what should be the focus of our plan moving forward, and we had hundreds of people submit ideas about what they would like to be a part of that. So, all of that data that we collected from the community, all the input, is what was reviewed by our administrative leadership team, as well as our extended leadership team of all 25 leaders. We had teachers put in there, students, and it was open to the community. And so, all of that information is what drove, what goes into the plan.
Okay.
It's been a very transparent process. I challenge you to find any other district process that's been as open and transparent as ours has been, and will continue to be.
Okay. No more hands. We're going to move on to the student report, and then we'll bring the Hood School in. Mrs. Gabriella, did you want to speak and open in public comment quickly?
I do, thank you. Katie Gabriella, 13 Damon Street. I was also in attendance at the DE Forum last Wednesday. I thought it was a really well-done event, and I just wanted to comment, for anyone speaking that they think most of the people in town think this, or they think most of the people in town think that, I really implore you to speak for yourself exclusively. I know that there are many people in town with different thoughts, and I think that I applaud the district for everything it's doing to make DEI an important big rock in our district. I think that I'm one of many families who thinks that it's very important for us to continue to improve on our diversity, equity, inclusion initiative and to make sure that North Reading is a welcome place for everyone, and that there are many people who believe this also. So, I applaud both the school committee and the district for everything they're doing. We have work to do, but everything that we're doing so far is definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to move to the student report. Shivana Isrukhant, I think this may be the last time we get to speak to you, I don't know, but we turn it over to you.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much. This is actually the last time I will be here before I graduate, so thank you so much for the past three years for being able to be with student voice here. I also just did want to quickly give a little bit of a statement before I started the student report. I run the social activism club at the school, and as a student of color in the community, I just wanted to thank Dr. Daley and the rest of the administration on behalf of various minority students in the community who feel like these DEI big rocks have definitely made our experience at the high school safer or more beneficial or more positive. So, yes, thank you then. And then, just to get into the student report, I'm excited to talk a little bit about what's been going on at the high school recently. Currently, the big push occurring is academics. So, seniors have a new concept called "calculation day" coming up this Wednesday, where their scores and attendance will be calculated, and if their grades are above a 93 average and they have a minimal amount of absences, they are allowed to be exempt from final exams. This is a new concept that is in trial testing as an opportunity to give senior students who've taken multiple APs and multiple AP exams a break during their very last week of high school. In addition, junior students are beginning to take SATs and doing research for colleges, and the school continues to provide students with summer opportunities as well as scholarship opportunities for seniors. Back to senior privileges, seniors have approximately two weeks left of classes, and then senior week, which has graduation, prom, et cetera. A lot of school events are happening currently as well. For example, the NHS induction ceremony recently occurred for juniors and seniors, which was very successful, and the North Shore Chamber Commerce Dinner occurred last Thursday with the top 5% of the graduating class. In addition, more events like the superintendent's luncheon and graduation are coming up for seniors. At this time, all seniors have either committed to their college or made their decisions for careers or gap years. To wrap with academics, AP exams just finished last week, and most students were able to take their exams. There are makeup days for the next few weeks for students who are absent. In addition, academic recognition night is this Wednesday, where teachers and staff nominate individual students to be recognized for excellence in various subjects. In terms of sports, these are the spring stats for the Cal League currently instead of the overall league. So, for the Cal League, baseball is 5-6, boys across is 5-5, girls across is 3-7, softball is 8-2, boys tennis is 3-3, girls tennis is 5-4, boys spring track is 6-1, and girls spring track is 7-0. In terms of extracurriculars, many of the arts organizations and school-based clubs are figuring out their plans for next year, as well as re-electing or appointing officers. Some of the newer clubs are appointing their officers for next year, while some of the more established ones have established election top sets. For student work, I thought I'd just quickly mention something we're doing in my AP physics class. We are currently creating bottle rockets, which is a fun way to close out the year now that our exam is over. So, we're basically engineering and designing our own rockets, heading a little bit further away from the traditional bottle rocket, which is kind of exciting. And so, just a personal note on that, I took six APs this year, so following the exams, mostly 75% of my classes have been pretty chill and pretty relaxing, so that's a fun note for seniors who have recently taken a lot of exams. Most of their classes are winding down, and this bottle rocket experiment is an example of that, I guess. So, thank you so much. That's just a little bit of a rundown of what's been going on at the school.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Shivie? I will say Shivie. I just, I just want to say, since it's your last meeting, that in my, in my sixth year here now, you're probably the most impressive student that I've ever seen come before us. I mean, I'm friends with your parents, I see a lot of the accomplishments you've done. I mean, the scholarships that you've won, recognize that a bit, but, I mean, the true value of you as a student goes well beyond that. I mean, you've, I mean, I can just say that when we've had a lot of very touchy subjects that we've talked about before, you've given incredible insight into them. You've done a great job representing, you know, a lot of different, you know, different hats that you wear, and so, I just want to say, you know, we are so honored to have had you, you know, as one of our school committee reps, and, you know, I wish you all the best at Harvard, because I know that's where you are going, and, you know, truly, you have been an exceptional student, and, you know, congratulations on all your successes.
Thank you so much. It's exciting that you're not going to be part of the evening for the task day.
Okay. Dr. Daley, do you have a hand up?
I just wanted to echo the same sentiment. Shivie, it's been a pleasure working with you and learning from you and having you shape so much of what's happening in our district. Thank you.
Great enough to come forward and tell their personal story, be hijacked by the possibility of someone on a keyboard or saying something. So that was a decision I made and I stand by it. There will be other events that will be virtual, that will be accessible to anyone who is concerned with COVID or any other issue. But we believe that that night was an in-person night and it was open to anyone who wanted to come. And like I said, there were people that reached out and asked if they could come and they didn't have children in the school and they were invited. So.
Okay. Any other public comment? Mrs. Largin, you've already spoken. What's, is there a specific question or I just don't want to keep going around a second time. Was there a specific question? Yep, go ahead. Correct. He asked a question. Do you have a question? What's the question?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Good evening again. Janine Largin, 11 Hillside Road. So my question actually I guess is to Mr. Daly. Your comment that this is going on everywhere. I'm just wondering what prompted North Reading to do it?
Dr. Daly, did you hear the question?
I believe the question was what prompted us to make DEI a big rock? And I'll share this out in greater detail and I'll give more information where we share out the full plan. But essentially, we believe that this work is important work that needs to be done. We believe that there are issues around equity throughout the state. There are laws that we need to follow. I heard someone earlier referring to there's only two genders. Well, that's not what the law states in the state of Massachusetts. So we need to be respectful of what the law states, what the law follows. And we're going to make sure that we are respectful of the students and staff who are in our buildings, who identify as transgender, non-binary. And so that's very important. And so we had students, as some of you I know in the room were a part of those calls last year, we had a forum for visioning to help plan and develop what should be the focus of our plan moving forward. And we had hundreds of people submit ideas about what they would like to be a part of that. So all of that data that we collected from the community, all the input, is what was reviewed by our administrative leadership team, as well as our extended leadership team of all 25 leaders. We had teachers put in there, students, and it was open to the community. And so all of that information is what drove what goes into the plan.
Okay.
It's been a very transparent process. I challenge you to find any other district process that's been as open and transparent as ours has been. And will continue to be.
Okay. No more hands. We're going to move on to the student report and then we'll bring the Hood School in. Mrs. Gabriella, did you want to speak and open in public comment quickly?
I do, thank you. Katie Gabriella, 13 Damon Street. I was also in attendance at the DE forum last Wednesday. I thought it was a really well-done event and I just wanted to comment, for anyone speaking that they think most of the people in town think this, or they think most of the people in town think that, I really implore you to speak for yourself exclusively. I know that there are many people in town with different thoughts and I think that I applaud the district for everything it's doing to make DEI an important big rock in our district. I think that I'm one of many families who thinks that it's very important for us to continue to improve on our diversity, equity, inclusion initiative and to make sure that North Reading is a welcome place for everyone. And I feel that there are many people who believe this also. So I applaud both the school committee and the district for everything they're doing. We have work to do, but everything that we're doing so far is definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm going to move to the student report. Shivana Isrukhant. I think this may be the last time we get to speak to you. I don't know, but we turn it over to you.
Hey everybody. Thank you so much. This is actually the last time I will be here before I graduate. So thank you so much for the past three years for being able to be a student voice here. I also just did want to quickly give a little bit of a statement before I started the student report. I run the social activism club at the school and as a student of color in the community, I just wanted to thank Dr. Daly and the rest of the administration on behalf of various minority students in the community who feel like these DEI big rocks have definitely made our experience at the high school safer or more beneficial or more positive. So yes, thank you again. And then just to get into the student report, I'm excited to talk a little bit about what's been going on at the high school recently. Currently, the big push occurring is academics. So seniors have a new concept called calculation day coming up this Wednesday, where their scores and attendance will be calculated. And if their grades are above a 93 average and they have a minimal amount of absences, they are allowed to be exempt from final exams. This is a new concept that is in trial testing as an opportunity to give senior students who've taken multiple APs and multiple AP exams a break during their very last week of high school. In addition, junior students are beginning to take SATs and doing research for colleges. And the school continues to provide students with summer opportunities as well as scholarship opportunities for seniors. Back to senior privileges, seniors have approximately two weeks left of classes and then senior week, which has graduation from etc. A lot of school events are happening currently as well. For example, the NHS induction ceremony recently occurred for juniors and seniors, which was very successful. And the North Shore Chamber Commerce Dinner occurred last Thursday with the top 5% of the graduating class. In addition, more events like the superintendent's luncheon and graduation are coming up for seniors. At this time, all seniors have either committed to their college or made their decisions for careers or gap years. To wrap with academics, AP exams just finished last week and most students were able to take their exams. There are makeup days for the next few weeks for students who are absent. In addition, academic recognition night is this Wednesday where teachers and staff nominate individual students to be recognized for excellence in various subjects. In terms of sports, these are the spring stats for the Cal League currently instead of the overall league. So for the Cal League, baseball is 5-6, boys across is 5-5, girls across is 3-7, softball is 8-2, boys tennis is 3-3, girls tennis is 5-4, boys spring track is 6-1, and girls spring track is 7-0. In terms of extracurriculars, many of the arts organizations and school-based clubs are figuring out their plans for next year as well as re-electing or appointing officers. Some of the newer clubs are appointing their officers for next year while some of the more established ones have established election topics. For student work, I thought I'd just quickly mention something we're doing in my AP physics class. We are currently creating bottle rockets, which is a fun way to close out the year now that our exam is over. So we're basically engineering and designing our own rockets, a little bit further away from the traditional bottle rocket, which is kind of exciting. And so, just a personal note on that, I took six APs this year. So following the exams, mostly 75% of my classes have been pretty chill and pretty relaxing. So that's a fun note for seniors who have recently taken a lot of exams. Most of their classes are winding down and this bottle rocket experiment is an example of that. So thank you so much. That's just a little bit of a rundown of what's been going on at the school.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Shivie? I will say Shivie. I just want to say since it's your last meeting that in my sixth year here now, you're probably the most impressive student that I've ever seen come before us. I mean, I'm friends with your parents. I see a lot of the accomplishments you've done. I mean, the scholarships that you've won, recognize that a bit, but I mean, the true value of you as a student goes well beyond that. I mean, you've, I mean, I can just say that when we've had a lot of very touchy subjects that we've talked about before, you've given incredible insight into them. You've done a great job representing, you know, a lot of different, you know, different hats that you wear. And so, I just want to say, you know, we are so honored to have had you, you know, as one of our school committee reps. And, you know, I wish you all the best at Harvard because I know that's where you are going. And, you know, truly, you have been an exceptional student and, you know, congratulations on all your successes. Okay. Dr. Daly, do you have a hand up?
I just wanted to echo the same sentiment. Shivie, it's been a pleasure working with you and learning from you and having you shape so much of what's happening in our district in a positive way with the Social Activism Club. With your work around the anti-racism resolution and some of the language there, that really helped us come to agreement on that and consensus on that. And I really do appreciate everything and I wish you the absolute best of luck in everything. I know we're going to hear big things and you're going to make North Reading very proud. So thank you.
Thank you so much again. It's been so exciting to be able to work with you these past three years, Dr. Daly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, Shivie. Are we going to move on? We have the Hood School virtually here. So Dr. McKay, I think we're turning it over to you. Can you hear us okay?
May I take just a moment?
Yep.
I'm Dr. McKay, president of the Hood School.
Go ahead.
Dr. Daly, are you going to be able to run the presentation remotely or am I going to run it off of one of mine? Because I would need access to share the screen.
I can run it, whatever you think is easier. What would you prefer?
I think it'd probably be easier if you ran it.
Yep, I can do that. You just tell me when it's ready to go.
Yep, pull it up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I just have to, let me just share the screen.
Second slide's the agenda.
Michael did that from the... Well, I got it all set.
No, it'll come up when you share.
There's some videos embedded in it, so it might be easier too.
Okay.
Excellent. So the second slide's the agenda for tonight. Great. So we're excited to welcome the school committee here tonight and everybody else in the audience. Tonight, we're going to go through a little introduction, basically the theme of what the Hood School is all about. We're going to talk a little bit about family community engagement, specifically one of the family community engagement events that we had. The Hood School Student Council is going to come and give an update as to what they've gone through this year and all of their actions, as well as an update on Eureka Math, a more of like a student presentation reflecting Eureka Math throughout the years. Then we'll have an opportunity for some questions and answers. So you're going to see some students tonight on some videos and you're also going to see some students live. So it's going to be some fun. Next slide, please. So for those of you who are new to the Hood School community, we've been very successful over the last 14 years. On the next slide shows our theme. Dr. Daly? Thank you.
Dr. Daly.
It's being slow. So it should be on the third slide right now, hand in hand?
Yep, it's not. I can just go through it. We really don't need the visual. But basically, our theme here at the Hood School is hand in hand, together we can. With that being said, we believe that we can accomplish any goal that we set for our students if we work together, meaning all members of the Hood School community, parents association, school committee, school council, student council, teachers, faculty, and everyone. We all basically outline our set goals and we all work towards that mission. So we're very proud of that theme that we have, hand in hand, together we can. Next slide is our current school improvement plan goal, basically family and community engagement, learning and growth of all students and success through all staff, effective partnership with families, community organizations, and other stakeholder groups, including the school committee, school parents' association, school council, school staff, and other members of the community at large. We've been very successful with that, even with the situation that we've dealt with with the pandemic. We were able to make those connections. This year, our theme on the next slide, and the next few slides are going to go kind of quick. This year, we hosted a fundraiser right before the Thanksgiving break. So you'll see that's Ms. Slavin's class and Ms. Sherman's class outside Bollot. Remember that day was a cold day. Basically, the parents' association ran a fundraiser outside the school. All the students participated. There are opportunities for fundraising. Go to the next slide. The school was able to make a profit of $41,000 this year. Total funds raised, believe it or not, was $71,000. Student participation, so 100% of the students participated, 87% of the students registered to participate in the fundraiser, but everybody in the building participated. And 80% of those students raised money. Next slide. So with that being said, as you can see, there was a large amount of money raised. That was not a lot of work for me. That was a lot of work for these individuals. I'm not going to go through all of their names. I'll be recognizing them later on. But as you can tell, we had a plethora of volunteers. That picture on the left-hand side is actually all of their students at the Hood School. I didn't call them and I had their kids come up and take a nice little picture. So I just want to say a special thank you to that group. It was quite a feat, quite an event. So I want to invite Avery, I'm sorry, yeah, Avery Charlotte and Blake up just to share what their takeaway from the fundraiser was. So Charlotte, what did you really think about the fundraiser? So how many laps did you remember? So 50 laps, Blake? No, what was your favorite thing about the fundraiser? Oh, yeah. We got in a little bit of trouble at the Hood School for the loud music, if you might remember. I think there was a police voicemail because the field was quite noisy or something, but we were excited. Thank you for your attention. Next slide, please.
Need just a second.
You look like a game show host today, Dr. McKay.
Our next slide is our student council. So a special thank you. Our students are great, but our students are great with student council because of their leaders. So Mrs. Clary and Mrs. Sherman do an amazing job with these students and you're going to get to meet each one of them. And they're going to share a little bit about what they do, but they would not be as successful as they are without those two amazing individuals. So a special thank you to Mrs. Clary and Mrs. Sherman.
Sean, can you mute her? Anna McGovern.
Yes, Emily's going to start over. Thank you.
Hello, I am Emily, representative of the Hood School Student Council. First, I want to talk about student council's content. Being a part of student council is active, have to be a good example for the community. We have to grab our student council term on Friday and we have to write announcements to students who are in the classroom. Now I will talk about funded fundraising. We have this fundraising program. The fundraiser is $800. All of what came out of this fundraising was, thank you. Hello, I'm a student. I always talk about the planning and all the stuff that we pay to do during the year. We, when we have meetings on the first Monday, every Monday, we work out. We, all of us plan for a plan to go to the year. Sometimes we write a crowd work. We often plan fundraisers to run at school. All that stuff we do here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Skydolivier. I'm president of the Hood School. Today I will be talking about a fundraiser we had in the class to watch the students' school. Raised $250. Hope that the money goes to hospitals for families who need help and special equipment for doctors. And I really enjoyed this fundraiser because a lot of helping kids get what they need to survive, kind of makes me feel a little bit pleased. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessica, president of the Hood School Student Council. I'm going to talk about what I enjoy most about student council. For the past year, actually, I've enjoyed everything that's happened. Student council has taught me the first fear of the difficult and it's helping me cope inside and outside of school. Next.
Hello, I'm Maria and I'm a supporter of the Hood Council. Today I will be talking about one of our schools, one of our greatest universities. We chose to, fundraiser for UNICEF in the situation of the Ukraine. So many families in Ukraine are suffering at the pace of a pandemic. We are planning to have a fundraiser in May 27, when we will raise a plane to Ukraine. The whole UNICEF fundraiser is called to drive between Russian children and young immigrants to the world. UNICEF boards in 190 countries and territories to their forces to help with its efforts. Every child has the right to go from a safety area and make a house there. The whole campaign has helped the government on the total overall responsibility to public and daycare students. This year, the change has also decided to have a fundraiser to help this community because my students, many students have gained awareness of education that can be grown by. We raised $250. This company provides comfortable environment and people that have higher needs.
Excellent. So that was our Hood School Student Council. We're very proud of them. We love to see them out front. They collect money for all these great charities for the school. They send out announcements. So we're very proud of them. So have a good life. Next up, I'm going to introduce Ms. Slavin. Ms. Slavin is, and Dr. Daly, it's the next slide after her. You can show her, but then it moves right into, it moved right into Eureka Math throughout the year. So Ms. Slavin is our math curriculum leader and she is also a first grade teacher here at the Hood School. And she's going to talk a little bit about Eureka Math through the years and share some student presentations on that.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I'm just going to introduce you to three friends that are going to share a brief overview of what the presentation will teach you about tonight for Eureka Math. So I'm going to call up Charlotte Catarano, Avery Carlson, and Blake Carlson. Charlotte is in the fifth grade here at the Hood School. Avery is in the second grade here at the Hood School and Blake is also in the fifth grade. So they're just going to share a brief little message with you.
Thank you for visiting us tonight. We are excited to show you the math we've learned during our time here at the Hood. Math may not always be easy for everyone, but we promise everyone has discovered a moment for moments of success. This math course, the concepts we understand.
We're going to take you on a journey of measurement through grades kindergarten and fifth grade. You will see where we started with non-standard units of measurement and where we are going with standard units of measurement. We hope you enjoy our presentation.
Thank you. Great job. Awesome. So the message behind what they're sharing with you is that at one point, and I think all of our mathematical careers have passed, is that it hasn't been the most fun for us. So when the North Reading School District adopted the Eureka Math program about six years ago, I think us as teachers were like, wow, we wish we had the opportunity to learn this way as well when we were former students. So I chose to pick one standard and kind of show you what it looks like from the K-1 model into grades two and three. And as we know, third grade's when the, you know, the Massachusetts DM tests are taken. So we can show you how that looks also through fifth grade. So this is just a brief picture. Oh, Dr. Daly, am I going back? Thank you so much. So I think the picture and the visuals right there explain it perfectly, what it looks like in kindergarten. Students are talking about longer, shorter, but then children are eventually getting up to metric conversions as they get ready to prepare for middle school. So I'm going to show you briefly tonight about measurement with a focus on length and what does measurement look like from kindergarten through fifth grade. Thank you. Go to that next one. Awesome. So really big message that Dr. McKay, you know, preaches through our school, through the kids and through us as a staff is data. It's all about the data. We like big data and we cannot lie. So we're talking about what is data and how do we use it to gather information? So students are collecting data nonstop. They're gathering information by just making their observations and identifying objects through non-standard units of measurement with paperclips and cubes and string, making it relative for the kids at a young age. And then moving into how do we use a ruler and how do we now make metric conversions? Thank you. You can go to the next one. So I just, what I did was I aligned all the standards for the Massachusetts, the Common Core, from K to five. And as you can see, everything's about making sure it's measurable data. And the words that are highlighted in every grade level is that word measure or measurement. So what I'm hopeful that you'll recognize when I show you three videos that are coming up soon is just the fact that you're going to see that these kids that are even in fifth grade, Charlotte and Blake, that just gave up along with most of our student council, they all started with Eureka Math in first grade and even kindergarten. So there was a little gap year where we only had it in first and moved it on. But for the most part, we've seen our math scores really shoot up there since having this program in our district. So you're going to see what measurement looks like as simple as taking two objects and seeing shorter and longer. And then the next few slides, Dr. Daly, are just showing the vocabulary. So we have word walls in first grade. We're really trying to promote our math vocabulary, getting the kids to think about real-world problems. So as you can see, in grades two and three, for example, a lot of that vocabulary shows up similarly in each grade level with a little bit more each year. So luckily for every teacher, for the start of each school year, you always start with the previous school year as a review. So second grade, they're reviewing what first grade had just taught and then they're adding on and building on to just help the kids feel like they are mastering math one step at a time and one year at a time. And then next slide shows fourth and fifth, obviously with some meters and miles and square units. So coming up next, I'll show you a quick video. These are two of my current first graders. And they're going to take you through measurement and we're going to get to see the topic we chose, why we chose it, because it's all about hooking their interest early on. So stay tuned and I hope you enjoy. All right, first grade friends, want to share your first name on that slide? Your name is? Your name is? Jared. Some friends say I'm going to remind you of your name. Well, they hit the top. So do you want to know what else? What do you see, sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, it is a little bigger. Because we sometimes see flowers starting to grow, right? Why, no, why, Jared, you can pick a card for her. And then I want you to do what you said in your mind. You think that I'm going to make a favor of it? Or come back to it for you? All right, so let your heart down. And then you're going to go from there. And we just called what? When we measure, we always start at the end. The, what do you think Travis? Because you have not the end. Point, endpoint. You go endpoint to endpoint when you're measuring. All right, make sure we don't have any spaces or any overlaps. Go ahead, Jared. You're going to maybe need the other hand too, to hold the card down. Awesome. You're going to make sure that paperclip is right at the bottom and you just keep going on top. I love that. Perfect. We're going from the bottom of the flower to the top. Great job. I like this straightener. Great. It's just about how many small paperclips. Let's count from the beginning. Ready, one?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Good. So with this marker, could you record that measurement in the top corner? You've got to be careful. Right around the corner. Six centimeter cubes. Great. So now I'm going to clear off these small paperclips. And now Travis gets to pick a card. Okay, you go Travis, watch your pick a card. Awesome. So now watch your switch positions. Maybe that might help, right? Rotate. Travis, which unit of measurement do you want to try? Do you want to use centimeter cubes or do you want to use paperclip? Oh, all right. I love that you're going to show us a different time. All right, go ahead. Jared and I are going to watch. I love you checking the camera, making sure everything needs to go. What's your prediction? Do you think it's going to take more centimeter cubes or less?
More.
Yeah, why do you think that? Go ahead.
Because I think it's a little bit smaller and we have a little more space and it's shorter.
Oh, so the centimeter cube is shorter than the paperclip. Awesome. Travis, I know it gets really difficult to do that. Awesome. You're doing great. I can hold the card still for you. Maybe you want to scoop these up. Good work.
I think it's going to take like 20.
You think it could be 21? I like that you're making a prediction. Travis picked a difficult unit of measurement, didn't he? I love it. Great work, Travis. Almost there. I love it. Great work Travis. Almost there. There is a small space at the bottom. Yep. As you're building, you're connecting your cubes. I love that. No overlaps, nice straight line. At the end, we'll count together.
I hope it's about 19.
Oh, are you counting as you place them?
No, I just, I would reckon that's probably enough too.
Oh, okay. We're almost there. This will be our last one? All right. I think that's just about important to find. All right. So go ahead and count carefully. Let's do it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. So with this marker right here, what are you going to record for your units? The flower was 16 what? Centimeter?
Centimeter cubes?
Yep, perfect. I'm going to record 16.
I just figured something out.
What'd you figure out?
I did six and then then.
Oh, so what difference between 16 and six? 16 is how many more?
10.
10 more than six. All right. Well, friends, I want to thank you. You did a fantastic job. I appreciate your help. I appreciate your help. Thank you so much for showing us the measurement for first grade. Thank you. So that was just a quick little. All right, first grade friends, want to share your first name with us? Your name? Again, absolutely if you'd like, but that was a good little take on what first grade measurement looks like. And so now we're going to be using those same cards. We're going to, I promise they get a little bit quicker as the kids get older. But now we're going to take a look at measuring that same length, but now with a ruler for second and third grade. All right, awesome. I'm here with my third grade friends. You are? Brooklyn and Tyler. Okay, Brooklyn and Tyler. What you're showing us today is how measurement looks in third grade. Okay, and so when I went through first grade the other day, we looked at these flowers and we were like, oh, let's use a non-standard measurement unit here to measure these objects endpoint to endpoint. We did a centimeter cube, we paperclips, but we also use toothpicks, unit fixed cubes, but you're using a different tool for that. Our ruler, because I always think I chose flowers. What do you think? It's spring. Some people might be planting a garden or getting their tap water going. So Tyler, what I would like you to do is why don't you grab your first card? I was just placing it in the camera. Great job. Yep. Great. And you notice black line. You think that black line is going to help us do today? Where's your ruler? Yeah, so another ruler can go. Great. So I know the camera's a little awkward. Do you want to move it to the side a little bit to work with you? That's perfect. Why don't you pick up the ruler and choose? Are you going to do centimeters or inches? It's up to you. Awesome. Let's do inches. I love this. Right, and I love the way that you lined up the bottom of the ruler to the first endpoint all the way up. It's about how many inches tall that is? Seven, so you're going to record your measurement? Awesome. I love the way you showed the units you measured. Great. Thanks, Tyler. Want to mark it? Brooklyn? Brooklyn, which one do you want to pick? Tyler, there you go. So many choices. Oh, I love this. Place it right on the camera. Now, looking at this right away, do you think this is longer? Or I'm sorry, let's say longer or shorter. Is your flower longer or shorter?
Shorter.
Shorter. So we could also say this one is taller. Oh, has a longer line. Okay. So Brooklyn, you pick whatever you like. And if you want to measure in centimeters or inches, what do you do? Inches again. Great. Probably be less inches, right? Awesome, Brooklyn. I love the way you started up your endpoint. Nice work. It is about four inches. Awesome. What a difference. This isn't what first grade is like, was it? Look at the difference in you friends when I last had you. Great. Thank you so much for working today. I appreciate your help. We rocked it. Thank you for showing our friends what third grade measurement looks like. Okay, so those three. All right, awesome. I'm here with my third grade friend. I did it again. Okay, so now we're transitioning up to fifth grade. These are two former fifth graders that are going to take a look at perimeter and area. So now we're not just taking a look at a flower, but now I'm having them think a little bit bigger picture. And if they were to plant a garden and they had to lay down some sod in the yard and if they need to fence their yard. So this is Anna and Anthony.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm here with my fifth grade friend. We have Anna and Anthony. And they're going to show us how we have traveled through the years of Eureka Math from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade to show us what measurement looks like up at the upper levels. So why do you think I have a word problem today on planting a garden issue? What do you think? It's spring. Most people do it, Anthony. Plant a garden. There's something about it that their houses and their yard is beautiful. So I'm going to leave this word problem to you both. And then we're going to talk about what you need to do in conversions or what we're trying to solve. And then we'll go to page two and three and get to work. Sound good? All right, so here we go. It says Ben is planting a garden and he has a rectangular area of nine meters long and six meters wide. He wants a fence that will go around it as well as grass, sod to cover. So sod being that grass and just layout, okay? So first, we need to discover how many meters of fence will we need? And how many square meters of grass sod will we need to put in that area? So we're talking on the rectangle, right? Should be where we learned right back in preschool. So let's get to the first page. Right here. We're talking more like a square, but we don't really have the exact shape. But we know we need to start by finding perimeter. What do you do with perimeter? When we're trying to solve perimeter, we have to add all the what? Sides together, right? So why don't you try and mark up where if it's nine meters long and six meters wide, there you go. Make a match on both sides. Good. Put that, oh, that's okay. Hang on. Nine. We love smart boards. They're pretty. That's all right. Watch. I'll show you. We just want to get the tip of the marker. Try to just use that tip. You want to try the next one? You guys can both write at the same time. Beautiful. All right, so it's perimeter. What do we have to do? Do we multiply the length times the width or we're adding all the sides? Yeah, we're adding. You two both want to pick one of the lengths and add on the side. And Anthony can do the width. Anna can do the length.
All right, what do you friends think? Eighteen and twelve make?
Thirty. That's okay. We're being recorded. It's time. Good. So we can record thirty. And what are your units, Anthony? That's okay. Thirty meters. Awesome. This is also like a little lesson on smart boards too, right? That's okay. Thirty. Awesome. So you need thirty meters of fence, right?
All right, and now we're going to have an idea. And now for my, how much sod? That was a big, how much sod do you need? So we're looking to record your measurements. And I'm going to go around your lawn. And like, if you're working on your units. Does it weigh to some extent? Okay, so now for my, you will win a medal. My, my, wait. So what's that? Go ahead. I didn't know. Is this? You need to, you need to. This is you. Awesome. All right, we can use the. Meters squared, right? Awesome. So Ben needs 54 meters squared. So we took a garden, we figured out how much fence he needs based on those two measured lengths. And we figured out how much sod we needed to do that. That's all I was asking you to do. Great. 75. Appreciate your help. Appreciate you showing us what fifth grade measurement looks like. So that was just a brief, I'm sorry, it felt brief when it was happening, but I feel like it looked a little bit there. But that was just an overview of what it looks like from kindergarten through fifth grade. So of course, as you can see, very fun to have familiar students come back, use a smart board and technology. But overall, I think we feel as a school community that since having this math program, it's really enhanced our kids' relatability to the content that they're learning and just making it more relative to them. So thank you for having me tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here. Hopefully I can answer them.
Thank you very much.
That kind of brings us to a close tonight. I want to thank you for inviting the Hood School. I want to thank Ms. Slavin and Mrs. Sherman. Yeah, for real. That's still hanging out to the end. We'll try to answer any questions you have, but we really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to showcase what we're doing here at the Hood School and what we're working on to get better at. So any questions?
Any questions? No? You have not. Mr. McGowan, you look like you have a question.
Well, I was just going to say, I'd love to have you guys share those three videos with us. The sound was a little wonky. I would love to watch them again and be able to hear them all the way through. I definitely got the gist of what you were saying, of what you were doing in the three parts, but I'd love to watch them again.
Those were shared in the alarm loop package.
Oh, okay, yep.
Actually, I'm sorry. The full presentation was on the packet. I'll share that tonight. Alarm loop packet.
Thanks, Tyler. Yeah, I don't think I have any questions on it. I understood the content tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you, kids, for coming. We always like having presentations from you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night, everyone. Okay. I'm going to move up to the stand, but we're going to move on now. We have a couple of the presentations. We have Chartwells, I believe, first. And then we'll get to UC Pack. Don't worry. We're not leaving. We didn't forget you. Who do we have from Chartwells here? I'm going to move up and.
Oh, so you can see up here.
Well, no, just move. I have an old computer.
Oh, you need it.
Just got to get power here a little bit.
So I believe we have Anna McGovern, Food Services Director in North Reading, and Chris Callahan, the regional district manager, should be, I believe, on the call with Chartwells. Patrick, I just, I was going to share my, and kind of drive the presentation for Chartwells. Do you?
Do you have the ability to share?
Check that in a moment. I believe.
I'll give you that one. Can you hear us, Mike?
Yeah, we can. I can definitely hear you. Did I, I'm just not sure if I muted. Did I mute?
I'm okay. Can you hear us, Chris?
Chris, I can hear you.
Great.
Great. Yeah, Chris, we can hear you, and I'm going to let you take it away.
Okay, Anna, can you see the screen?
I mean, we can't.
I think you're on mute, Anna.
Can you hear me?
Michael, we're not seeing the slideshow. We're just seeing the actual, the whole.
All right, yeah. There you go.
Technology.
Are you seeing it now?
Yep.
Seen the program, but not the show.
Not in presentation mode. It's just the slides. I don't know if that's what you're doing.
I don't know what's going on with my phone, my audio.
You've got your computer on and your phone on, so turn, mute your computer.
I did that.
I mean, they don't see you?
And that seems to have fixed it. I can just do a window.
Okay, I turned my phone off.
There you go.
Is that better for you now? Okay.
Sound good, Anna. Just trying to get the screen up here for her.
Do you have the slide?
I don't know why it's.
We're working on it. You want me to do it, Michael? I have it too, I believe.
It just, it changed. That's why I'm.
Okay.
Now go.
Yeah.
From beginning.
Yeah. We good?
That's working. Yep.
That looks good.
Well, hello. Hello, everybody. Anna McGovern. You're North Reading Food Service Director, and it is truly one team, one community. The past two and a half years has definitely showed us that. Can you go to next slide?
Yep.
Like I said, two and a half years ago, we were serving meals out of every door in the building, delivering food to students' homes, and it was truly a combined effort. It's truly a pleasure for myself and Chartwells to be here. And next up is Chris Callahan.
Okay, so basically, we just wanted to show. Anna mentioned, you know, COVID service. And again, we've kind of stepped out of that rain now back to normal service and where the students are coming through the lines and we're presenting the food in a nice fashion again. It's nice to be back to full service. So this just shows a couple of pictures of the high school staff serving meals. The next slide would be one of the elementary staff. And then, again, in all the communities we serve, it's just nice to get back to some sense of normalcy. Anna, I want you to continue.
Yeah, the, as far as the pre-COVID meal services, we want to go back to having the students self-serve. We want to open up the salad bar. We find it makes a difference. We find they eat healthier because they have the ability to take their own sides, the vegetables, the fruits, the proteins. So we're looking forward to that, opening up the gates at the middle school and high school. At the little elementary school, we have, we tried, the oven was very, very tight. It was an armor repairable. And we managed to get a brand new double-decker oven at that building. But the original date was September 2022. I said, I can't go a whole year. So we all put our heads together, Chartwells and North Reading, and we came up with this beautiful oven. It really looks good there, so they're happy. And we have new cafe themes coming next year. I know the, everyone's excited about the broth with the bowls and the proteins and the noodles. We can make their own. So, you know, new signage. The students like coming into the cafeteria. I see it every day, a month of every day. I'm in the schools. They enjoy it, from the elementary schools all the way to the 12th graders. It's really, it's really exciting. And financials?
Let's go to the next, let's go to the next slide, Mike.
Sure.
So basically, there are a couple of, we're showcasing some three different themed scenarios with signage and themes for cafeterias. So we're working with each school to kind of figure out what will fit best in their cafeteria with signage. And there's actually a theme called Fresh Market Deli. There's a theme called Pop Art, and then a modern theme. So we've got a whole booklet of implementation of signage, which we'd like to start doing at these schools to give them a fresh look. So Anna mentioned a few new menu concepts too. We've got mac and cheese allergy is a new theme, as well as revolution noodle, which we're rolling out to the secondary schools. And the next slide, I think, shows the oven that we purchased. Again, we were able to reach out to one of our preferred vendors, and he just happened to have one oven in stock. One of the, one of the issues have been, the supply chain's been so crazy with getting equipment, food, everything. So, but we have such a strong partnership that we're able to reach out and find one for the school, and it's working well. Now, some of the, some of the things that we're battling through, it's been a challenging year. A few things that, and it's not just food services, I'm sure it's in all different departments, but staffing has been a challenge, supply chain's been a challenge, the inflation in pricing has been a challenge. But Anna and her team have been able to really manage the program very good under these circumstances, which, which is applaudable. One of the things that we did with the supply chain is we got ahead of it. And we were able to order the first two months of products before the year started. It really helped us get ahead of the supply chain. So of course, there have been challenges, and we're fighting through them. And just we're looking for, you know, some improvement in the coming year. you know, some improvement in the coming year. So, but again, Anna and her team have done a great job. The next slide, Mike? One of the things that is striking is that, once the waivers have been extended for this year, all meals became free for students, which was a great benefit for the communities. And you'll see here that we served 242,000 meals this year versus 134,000 meals last year. So they're really taking advantage of the meals at each school. Program revenues have increased, product costs have increased as well. But Anna's done a great job with Mike in managing the labor as well. So if you look at the bottom line, we've got some surplus to work with to reinvest into the program, which is fantastic compared to the last COVID service year. And Mike, Anna, and I putting our heads together on what would be good areas to reinvest and to make improvements to the program, and also maybe take a look at what we need to conserve, because next year is still, we're unsure of next year, what's gonna happen with service next year in terms of the USDA at a national level. There is rumors, there is actually... There are bills out there from Massachusetts that were submitted. Whether they're gonna extend the waivers for next year, it's still unclear yet. Some states have done it, Maine. A few other states have actually opted to do that. They just don't, we just, they're waiting on the USDA in terms of funding. So we should be hearing, I would say, in the next month, on what the outlook is for next year. But the good thing is that kids are used to eating the meals in schools. So I think they appreciate the quality and variety, and we look forward to keep that going next year as well. With that, I'll actually open up the questions.
Okay, any questions? Rich?
Yes, Anna and Chris, that's a great presentation. Thank you. And you guys have done a great job over the last few years, as we've talked about quite a bit. I just had a question. Do you guys solicit opinion from the students in terms of improvements or changes to the program?
We do. We actually, a lot of times, we'll have advisory committees, or student advisory, or wellness committees that we partner with. And it's extremely important that we get the input from the students as well as the faculty and staff. One of the things that, one of the programs we did was called Student Choice, where it's a great example of how we partner with the students, where we will actually sample two menu concepts and have a bidding war against those concepts. We share it with the students. We do tastings, and then we'll get the students' impact, input, to find out which one they like the best. So, for example, we'll match McCheseeology against Asian noodle or... And they'll vote to see what concept they like the best. And then we'll host that station for two weeks based on their input. And we will continue to do that throughout the year. It's been very successful in terms of gaining the students' input. So we truly believe in that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts? I'll jump in on a couple things. So first, just curious, Chris, how many districts does Chartwells provide food service for?
Oh, gosh, in the state or...
Yeah, I just get an idea of the size.
We're probably, in the country, probably five or six hundred districts.
Okay.
In the state alone, or New England, probably about 105, 120, around there.
I think the biggest thing I've seen since I was on the school committee was, I remember budget years in the past, we had to subsidize, that we had to allocate money for it. And I know we fought really, really hard, and Anna and the team did a great job getting us back to where we didn't have to do a subsidy, and there was actually a little bit of a surplus. Obviously, this year, you know, go figure when you don't charge for food. You sell more, you sell more meals when you're not charging for it. But do you have any idea, you know, or any thought on the future? Because with expenses so much higher right now, do you think we'll still be able to do it without a subsidy going forward when you have to pay for meals again?
That's our goal. I mean, that's always been our goal. And I think that the, there are two trains of thoughts on that. I think the one train of thought that I favor most is that, since the students are used to the variety of quality foods, and they're maybe in the past haven't participated in the meal program, I think that's gonna help us out in the years to come, if it goes back to the normal service. And we'll just have to really work hard on managing the cost as well as driving participation. But our whole goal is to keep it at a surplus so we can reinvest in the program.
And with a smaller number of meals served, assuming that'll be a little bit smaller, will you still be able to keep the same choice options?
Yeah, I think the choice options are helpful in terms of making sure there's options for the kids that they like. And I think that the challenge here comes upon us, that we have to produce the right amount of each choice. So that's why we work with production records, and we work really closely on what goes well, what doesn't go well, and what, when we manage that production record to make sure that the waste is low.
I guess I always talk too much, but my last comment will be for Anna. Just, I just want to thank the staff at North Reading for, you know, an incredible job throughout the pandemic. And, you know, we just renegotiated another, you know, extension of the contract, you know, to, you know, have a contract in place. And so we very much appreciate the staff and the, you know, the people that do it here. And so, you know, I just want to thank you for your leadership in that.
Well, thank you. The staff appreciates it, and I really do, too. It's a pleasure.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, anyone? Mr., yeah, go ahead. Michael, Michael first.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity also to thank both Anna McGovern and Chris Callahan. It's been a great partnership now for well over a decade. And I think certainly over the last two years, through the pandemic and the challenges that they spoke to, and we could really go into even greater detail with all the juggling and the doing the job differently and having to do, rise to the occasion every step of the way. And I think that through the difficult times that we've kind of weathered and put our heads together and worked hard, and it's been, I think the partnership and the teamwork has even grown. And it's been one kind of silver lining from the pandemic. I think that we have a very strong team and strong culture with both the food service workers certainly being members, you know, employees of the town and the school department and with the Chartwells team. I think it's, we've really collaborated well and gotten the job done and kept things running with all the challenges with the staffing, the supply chain. And I think, you know, other districts, you know, in the area, unfortunately, I think they've had to even have to shut things down at times or only offer one option, where I think a lot with the teamwork and the approach that we took, we didn't, you know, face some of those other, fortunately, some of those other challenges. And I just appreciate the efforts and the leadership by both Anna and Chris, certainly over the last two years. So thank you for that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Mrs. Cloney, you got a question?
Sure, I just wanted to add, my kids actually really like the food and sometimes are sad when...
That's great.
Sometimes are sad when, like, especially my high schooler, when you run out of certain things. And I was just curious if you found that now that kids are getting lunch for free, if there's been less waste? Because I wonder if he would, if it was like a choice about spending money on something versus, like, when there wasn't the option he wanted? If you, like, have in the past had more waste because kids...
There is actually less waste because they buy it as a second. If they don't like something and they want to try it, they'll get what they like, and then they purchase a second meal. And nine out of 10 times, they like that extra slice or a burger or a chicken patty or a salad. So it's not, we're tied with the waste.
To add to that, too, I mean, the supply chain has been challenging. So, and sometimes that, you know, you have a really popular entree on the menu, and all of a sudden, we don't get it. So it's a lot of things that we do that we try to substitute it or roll with it. And sometimes that, it makes the kids sometimes unhappy if you don't have that favorite item. So we're trying to work hard in making sure that we fix those issues. But it has been a challenge.
Oh, please don't take that as a criticism. I'm like, I was just curious if you're, like, you've seen a significant change in the amount of waste. I mean, he's a 15-year-old boy. He finds something to eat. He's not gonna go hungry.
Well, I think with...
But I like that he really likes something enough to be sad that he didn't get it, like that makes me happy for it.
We'll have to find out what that was.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the presentation. We like working with you guys and are glad to hear from you. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. I'm gonna move back again so that we're not splitting you up. Hang on. There's power over here. I just saw it. I thought I moved over here, so. I'll plug in and then we can...
Extension cord, I have one.
What?
You got it. Can you reach?
Yeah.
Oh, it's over there.
Okay. Now we are joined by the CPAC tonight, so Kathy, do you want to introduce yourself and who's with you and take it over?
I'd just like to introduce myself to everybody in the room. I'm Kathy O'Donnell Bustin. President of CPAC. I probably don't need that.
But this is for NorCal.
Okay.
You probably do. You can't yell loud enough for everybody in North Reading.
Right, right.
Okay. Again, my name is Kathy O'Donnell Bustin. I'm president of the North Reading CPAC. CPAC stands for Special Education Parents Advisory Council. I've had two children go through the schools, one's in North Reading schools, one's in college and one's in high school. And I'm really grateful for all the excellent education that both of them have had, both everybody who's sitting here and, of course, your predecessors and the administration and the teachers. So, but I am here today for CPAC, and here I have Nikki and...
Jennifer.
You know, what happens to your brain cells when you're speaking. So we have a really good team, and I'll have my first slide. We have a scientist, a computer programmer, a current teacher, a former teacher, and Nikki.
What did you do? Did you have a day job before?
An excellent, on-top-of-everything mom. So we have quite a team. I'm looking for my...
Yeah, do it. Michael, do you?
Presentation.
Was it in the packet?
Yes, it was in the packet.
Okay, I can pull it up.
It's in the packet. That was shared.
Okay.
It was a separate attachment.
It was a separate attachment.
Okay. I'm, I'll find it in my email. Is it in the room, Mike, or is it in the... Um, and I just need a minute to pull up your email and then... Sorry, I'm projecting this.
Really on top of tech tonight.
Yeah, we... Probably not a really good opportunity to do a tech dress rehearsal.
Okay. I got it.
There we go. Thank you so much, and we can go to slide number two. So this, the current team, this is our second year presenting to you. Oops, back one.
Yeah, I just gotta, I gotta share it.
One second. Here we go.
Okay, you want to go back a couple of slides? One more, another one more. There we go. Thank you so much. So the current team, this is our second year. I'm the chair. We have a wonderful lady who does a website. Then we have Jennifer, who's on my left, is doing the Understanding Our Differences Committee, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Nikki is on Recreation, Understanding Our Differences Committee. The commission, and she's also on the Board of the Commission on Disability. So we are all about collaborating and maximizing our capabilities by collaborating with the right people. Nick McLeod does graphic design and our publicity materials. Mary Ann Keith, Understanding Our Differences Committee, social media, email, and social events. And Jill Gadsby did the Light It Up for Autism Awareness. You might have seen the blue lights on the gazebo. That's what that was. Okay, next slide. And this is the things that we've accomplished in the past year. Mary Ann completed CPAC Summer School, which helps us to be effective. We had Cynthia Conant was so great. She presented a pupil personnel meet and greet. And all of our parents were able to speak or at least listen to a little bit more than you would normally cover in an IEP meeting. We got to hear about what the different administrators like to do. In October 2021, we started an Outreach Department Rec. We'd like to see more offerings that are able to have a disabled person attend them. Right now, they say, you're welcome to come, but we don't have anything special to accommodate you. So we're gonna work with them on that. We have our new NRCPAC logo, which was fun to have. North Reading Town Day, that was a great event, and we're gonna do it again. This is an opportunity for anybody to come and meet our leadership and tell us, because we want to listen. It's not about us telling them what we think they ought to do. We want to listen to what the people want us to do. North Reading Town Day is a great avenue for that. In November, we had Seeing Your Child for Their Abilities, Not Their Disabilities, Understanding Your Child's Learning Styles and Strengths with an advocate who lives in North Reading, Debbie Sharp. In March of '22, we started a collaboration with North Reading School of Ballet. And there's actually an adaptive dance class, which is, my son actually is in it. He's 18. He's in the class. He loves it. So I'm ready for the next slide. April 2022, Autism Acceptance Month, Light It Up Blue. And we also got a collaboration with the school libraries and the town library. So there was a little bit of tie-in there. We, in March 2022, we invited a speaker on the topic Understanding Our Differences. And we were impressed, and more about that in a little bit. Also in March, we collaborated with the Wakefield CPAC, the 16th Annual College Fair. Apparently, they've been doing it for 16 years. They're, so next year, we're going to collaborate with them again. I helped them, we helped them do better publicity. And we also had, we notified Mike, Michael Rosa of the... Yeah, Guidance Council. Yeah, I'm having those senior moments now. But the Guidance Council, so they were able to notify the student body. Again, just taking things that are in place and making sure that more people are able to participate. In April 2022, we had Basic Rights: Understanding the IEP Webinar. It's so important for the parents and for the teachers that all of our families understand what the IEP is, what, what it, it's actually the contract between the district and the parents. And everybody needs to, all the parents need to understand what's in it so that they can be good partners. In April 2022, North Reading School District was able to collaborate with Triangle, which is a nonprofit. They had some funding, and North Reading scored Explore the Workforce, a four-day program for disabled students to... a four-day program for disabled students to learn about interviewing and different things. And that happened on April 26th and 27th, and May 2nd and 3rd. In May, we're having the School Committee Report, and also, we're collaborating with the North Reading School District on an end-of-year survey. We wanna hear how the families are doing and what they wanna see more of. So, oh, here's our budget. We actually had expenses of $1,298, and by coincidence, our income was $1,298. The school district very helpfully paid for our MassPAC, CPAC District membership. That was $450. One of our, our members pays for the website and domain. The way it works right now is if a parent really wants to do something, they pay for it. And we'll maybe fix that as we go along, but that's how we're doing it right now. And we had Seeing Your Child for the Abilities Speaker Fee. We got a donation from the Citizens Impact Team of $400. Then we had a donation from one of our members. We had Town Day. The participant fee was waived, but our team did flyers, publicity, booth supplies. And, yeah, that's basically it. So, we are on budget. Okay, next slide. So now, what do we wanna achieve next year? Of course, we're gonna fulfill our legal mission to assist the school district. We're gonna be on hiring committees when asked, the monthly meeting that Superintendent Daley runs, and anything else that we can either bring information or, you know, assist. Now, we hope to run a pilot program on Understanding Our Differences. This is a fabulous curriculum. Oh, okay, so Understanding Our Differences is a curriculum targeted towards the elementary schools. It's like a two-hour session. What's really great about, and the goal of Understanding Our Differences is so that children won't just imagine, use their imagination to figure out what being disabled is like. They will have a small group, hands-on experience, that will help them to personally come to know a little bit of what it might be like to be disabled. Well, how could you possibly do that? Well, there's labs with activities. So, suppose you were writing your name backwards in a mirror. That would be a way of experiencing what dyslexia might be like. Or suppose you were using adaptive equipment, such as a button hook, to put on a shirt. That would be a way of learning about limited mobility. Now, you know, we're not, this is an award-winning curriculum that's in use different places nationwide. So, it's not just slap-dash together. There's modules. There's a module on blindness and low vision. There's a module on deafness and hard of hearing. There's a module on autism, physical disabilities, intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, and chronic medical conditions, including allergic conditions, asthma, diabetes, and epilepsy. And you would not do all of these together. You would get one topic during the module, small groups, hands-on. And then, the best, one of the best things about this program is that at the end, a person actually with that disability is invited to the small group. Now, I remember when I was a little kid, I was afraid of all older people except for my personal grandparents. They look weird, you know, and I didn't know how to talk to them, and so on and so forth. So, one of the genius of this small group activity is that they can talk to people and, you know, no points for guessing. They usually invite maybe a high school person with disability would come to the elementary school, or sometimes somebody recently in college, so that it's very effective, you know? They could say, "Oh, I had Mrs. So-and-so. How do you like, you know, hood school cafetieres?" I mean, they can really talk and find out that, yeah, these are just people who have different, different abilities and traits and stuff. So, we're very excited about that, this curriculum, and we're hoping to do a pilot. In fact, Jen had a meeting with the three elementary school principals and Superintendent Daley, right? Or, what was it? Cynthia? Oh, Sean, Sean Colleen, the, yeah, there you go, the man. I almost promoted you to superintendent, but not quite, so, yeah. So, they're, they're interested, and so, our job is to come forward with a well-detailed proposal that has all the things that are needed and how they're gonna be delivered, and so on and so forth, for consideration and tweaking and so on. So, so that's a little bit about, and that will, you know, that's, we feel that if we could do that, taking a step back, I'm told that the students of North Reading High School are really a good bunch. They're, they're just naturally courteous and kind, and they don't go out of their way to get into any trouble. Nevertheless, we would love for all of the elementary school students, who would then become high school students, to have this personal knowledge and getting to talk one-on-one with a disabled person. I think it will, it will definitely open their, their vision to a new experience. And that, and that, we as mothers, I hope I'm speaking for you. You can just... We as mothers will feel that we have, as parents, that we have brought a new experience that will give value to the entire school district. So, that's that. And that's, that's gonna be one of our major areas of concentration. In addition to that, we hope to find, provide four to six parent training webinars, which will include another meeting with Cynthia, because we want all the parents to completely understand and be good... Well, that'll take a couple of years, but we're gonna continue to work on all the families being able to be excellent partners with the school district. We're gonna, again, repeat the Understanding the IEP Basic Rights presentation. We're gonna work with Wakefield CPAC for the College Fair. And then, I'd like to bring a speaker on Person-Centered Planning. That is a topic that often comes up with transition age disabled people. And for people who maybe haven't heard this before, nor, students graduate at whatever age they are, 17, 18, or 19. But if you have not completed the requirements to graduate, then you may remain in the school district until age 22. And students of that population, it's called a transition from school-based services to adult services. And now, you know, so the families need to say, "Well, when it's not the school providing direction for my child, who's gonna be doing it?" And there are agencies, but you want to find out what the disabled student likes, you know? If the dad likes golf and he wants the kid to take recreation and golf, maybe the kid doesn't like golf. So, you base it on the students' issues, interests. Do they like dogs? Maybe they can work in dog grooming or doggy daycare or something. They like to cook, garden, whatever. So, anyway, that would be Person-Centered Planning. I hope we'll have a webinar on that. Using the survey, we hope to improve communications with the parents. I'd like to see us build community, have two-way conversation, more flowing of parent comments to us. We're gonna continue the collaboration with the New York Disability Commission. We're gonna continue the collaboration with North Reading School of Ballet. We're gonna explore collaboration with the North Reading Recreation Department. And I actually am doing some work with Autism Housing Pathways, which is a transition age group. And I was telling my buds, "I don't know how we're gonna use it in North Reading yet, but I'm sure we'll find a way to make it be of value to North Reading, even if I only talk to the other parents who are in half-high-school-age kids." So, we have some nice goals, and watch us achieve them. Okay, and the next, okay, and this is, I hope you all are following along. We have some pretty pictures here. On the left was our first Town Day, and we have Mary Ann and Nick and Nikki.
Right?
There's Nikki. And then, in the Adaptive Dance Class, that's my son Jeff, another girl, Victoria, and the teacher, who is Kelsey Teal. So, that's what we do. And I, I do wanna thank Cynthia, Gina, Dr. Daley, and Scott, who's been a great liaison for us. And at this time, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, gentlemen.
Sure, so, it's a, your agenda is both fantastic and ambitious. What would be the things that would be the biggest challenges for you guys to accomplish it? People, money, like, what would be the biggest thing?
You know, actually, um, well, I'm gonna say, actually, that the hardest thing is gonna be to reach the different parents, because they're busy, and I would like to reach them. I think that, you know, my son's in high school. I've had a bunch of experiences, and I, I really like the other parents to be able to do it easier. And then also, because if you wanna do stuff, the more hands you have, the more you can do. So, that's what I really, I really think that we're, but now, Jen, do you wanna say something?
I think we would also love to provide speakers and webinars for people in different topics. And that requires the...
Eventually, we're gonna need... We are, you know, attempting to punch above our weight, and I have ideas for where we can get certain speakers, like this whole collaboration thing, right? If you ha, if that person, that CPAC has a webinar, then I can have it if I publicize it. But, yeah, we do need to, you know, funds and connection with the people, and particularly for Understanding Our Differences. That is, it's a curriculum. There's a curriculum fee. There are materials. It's not outrageous. We're gonna do a pilot program, and we're hoping the accolades just, you know, flood in. Just to say, we, the speaker for Understanding Our Differences, the webinar, she was from North Andover. They ran this, they ran Understanding Our Differences in their, in their elementary school. And eventually, the, the way it works is that the small groups are facilitated by volunteers, but they thought it was such a great program that they hired the leaders, 'cause they wanted to always know it was always gonna happen. So, we're very optimistic that it's, it's gonna be great, really great.
No comments, question?
I had a question that maybe you guys know the answer to, or maybe Mr. Colleen or Dr. Daley does. You mentioned participating in search committees. Are there particular positions that where that's legislated, that you participate? You know that, or is it just common practice?
So, not legislated, I'll, I know Dr. Daley's not being so good at it. It's when we hire, when we are positioned that open up for committees for public participation, especially if it was a position with Student Services, that's probably where the CPAC might get invited.
Yeah, we get invited for school building principles. We get explicitly invited for elementary school principal committees. But we're, you know, the whole public is invited to all of them.
Yep.
Dr. Daley wants to join in too. Dr. Daley?
Yeah, just saying, I believe she was on the Assistant Superintendent Committee as well, the Director of CPAC.
Yep.
We certainly appreciate their involvement. All these projects are fantastic, and we appreciate their good work.
So, I...
I just had a question, just, just curiosity, if nothing else. You, you don't have a proposal yet, but do you have any idea of a ballpark cost for the Understanding Our Differences Pilot Program for the three elementary schools?
Yeah, so, this is... So, each unit, there's seven different units that cover different topics. A pilot program would cover one of those units. We could pick one. Whatever the school would be most interested in piloting, we'd be happy to try and organize for them. And each curriculum costs $500, and that would be good for the year, and it can be used in all three elementary schools. Additional costs would be materials for the kits. So, the kits would be the material you need for the hands-on activities. And those are things that can partially be donated. For example, with the physical disabilities unit, you need men-sized, large button-up shirts, so that way you can use the button hook to button up. So, there's certain things that we can try and get donated and things like that. Other things are printables, or things that you can easily find on Amazon, like small mirrors. They try to be as cost-effective as possible for these kits. They're not very expensive, between maybe $50 and $100, depending on the unit. Some units are mostly just printables. And then, Understanding Our Differences also suggests that we provide a honorarium to the speakers, which they suggest to be about $75. I, I'm not sure if all of the, depending upon who you get, North Andover has been doing this for years, and they typically use high school students that come in for them, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, or recent graduates. And they find that really great. The students get really engaged when they can relate to the student, 'cause they've gone through the same schools and been involved in all the same activities as them. And I'm not sure what type of honorarium they give to high school students, but that's typically what UOD suggests.
All right, great. Thank you.
What would be the best timeframe for us to forward the proposal, aside from yesterday?
Well, we, we've already, we've had, we've had, well, we've had meetings with the elementary school principals. Dr. Daley's been briefed on the program, and I believe it's been added to the strategic plan. Is that true? Maybe not.
Dr. Daley, I think, wants to jump in. Dr. Daley?
Yes, sir. So, it's very hard to hear, but I'm thinking that the question was about next steps for the, for the curriculum for the elementary students, the program?
Yes.
And the funding in particular, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, right now, it's at the review stage with our elementary leaders of the school, and she's unable to be here at the season, but she and I both are there now. And, but she will be sharing that out and trying to identify funding sources and bring it forward. So, this is a program we'd be able to do internally, and we can certainly bring it back if we would like to do it further, but, you know, if we believe that this is the direction to go, then we would try to find the funding to support that.
So, I'm gonna jump in with a few comments and questions here. I mean, on funding, I think when we do the budget, I think it's great to have an active CPAC. I mean, I'll start with thanking Kathy for stepping up, but she doesn't know is that if you, if nobody else steps up, it's a lifetime appointment, so you are here till, till you identify your own replacement. But, you know, I really appreciate all the effort you put in. I don't, I don't want the CPAC not to be active because of funds, and so, I would just say, we should think about it for, you know, putting a budget line in there potentially. But I would also personally say, I mean, I'm, you know, I've spoken many times. I have a child with special needs. Like, I mean, if you need money on something, if you reach out to me, you know, I can talk to Dr. Daley. I'll, I can write a personal donation as well. I'm happy to do that. So, you know, don't, don't let the money, if you reach out to us, you know, we will, we will do something to find it. Nikki, I wanna thank you for coming to school committee meetings, and I wanna, we've, we've noticed you in the corner up there. And so, you know, to the extent that if we are talking about things and you are sort of acting as, you know, almost like a liaison, and, you know, issues come up, don't hesitate to raise your hand and, you know, put your thoughts in, because we need to hear from, you know, all members of the community. And, you know, I think, I think CPAC's a great thing because, you know, I remember the first time I went to a CPAC meeting, they talked about, you know, the little school has a, has a group, you know, a, a PTO, and then the bachelor does, and the hood does. The CPAC encompasses all the, you know, all the special needs students in the district. And so, you know, it's an important community. So, um, a couple of quick other things. Number one, I mean, I think Kathy, when you did, I think you did the presentation last year. One thing, just a suggestion, I would say, is your daughter was very eloquent on that one as well. And so, I think, you know, one thing that I took away from that was really talking to, you know, a, um, a sibling of a child with special needs. And so, I thought that was, you know, that's something that stuck with me a little bit. And so, I, I really, you know, appreciated, you know, hearing that. And then, the other question, and maybe you can't do this if we don't have the curriculum and everything, but the Understanding Our Differences, it just seems like at Town Day, it would be great to have like a demonstration like that, that kids could actually do when they're walking around. Because, I mean, I go to Town Day with my kids and they always want to do something. And if you had a, you know, something like that, even if you had like the adaptive, you know, try to button your shirt or whatever, you had a shirt to put on and do that. I mean, it'd be great. I'm, I'm not saying in lieu of getting into the elementary schools, but I'm just thinking at Town Day, I mean, it was great talking to some of you last year, but if there was an event for kids, you might draw some more people in as well. And that might be, just, again, just a suggestion out there, um, to kind of combine what you're doing. And it'd be also a way to promote what you're trying to do with, with, you know, CPAC in the future. So, just my thoughts, but I appreciate all you guys, you know, what you're doing and, you know, your efforts and, yeah.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
What was that? Of course.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Well, thank you guys very much. We appreciate the update. And look forward to continuing to work with you guys. Okay, moving on. You guys can stay as long as you like. We won't be offended if you leave either because we know you have family, so. Okay, we're moving on. The sabbatical leave has been taken off the agenda for tonight. So, our second number three on the agenda is solar energy. So, I guess I'm updating on this one. Want me to?
I can lay in and what, I guess I was sorry and then, or up to you.
Which, whichever. You want me to set the table or?
Yeah, I want to.
Yeah, so, so one of our school committee goals this year was to investigate solar power. And just to kind of give a little bit of, of background, especially for the newer members, really ever since this building was built, we've been looking at, should we do anything with solar power? And a few years ago, we did a request for proposal. We got a bunch of proposals. One of them was great, so much better than all the other ones. We accepted that proposal. We went to town meeting and got all the, you know, all the necessary approvals in order to move forward with that. And then we found out that the vendor who proposed that was wrong in how they proposed it. And said, "Oh, we have to buy the solar panels? I thought you were buying the solar panels." And so, didn't move forward. It wasn't as good as we thought, and we didn't move forward at the time. The question then was, do we do anything else? And so, just to kind of give a comparison, the goal has, well, we've looked into whether we could use the solar power if we generate it, and with the great rates we get from RMLD, it doesn't make sense to do that. We looked into carports and, you know, solar panels on the, on the ground, ground arrays. They've, all, everything's been pretty clear that that's not the right way to go. What has been an option would be the roof at the high school, middle school. And so, we've looked into pretty much doing a lease agreement where we would lease out the roof to a provider that would come in, do a combined project with RMLD, and give a lease payment over 25 years. But when we did the RFP before, all the other ones that we didn't accept were around $20,000 to $25,000. And the question was whether that would be enough to do it, whether we should, you know, whether future incentives would authorize more. So, when it was one of our school committee goals, I happened to run into somebody who knew somebody who worked for Select Energy, and we ended up talking to Select Energy. The advantage of Select Energy, if we want to move forward, is they have won the bid with a consortium that we're a part of. What's that called? Power Options? Power Options, yep. So, they've, they've won the bid, so if we wanted to move forward with a proposal, we wouldn't have to do a request for a proposal again because they've already won the bid for the consortium we're part of. They put together a proposal. They talked to, um, Mr. Connolly and me the other day, kind of laid it out. Long, I mean, long story short, it'd be $25,000 a year over 25 years. The one thing that's not finalized yet is RMLD does have a, an incentive right now, $120,000 incentive. If that can be brought into it, it would be about $30,000 a year. So, what they really want to know right now is, before they do more work, are we interested in moving forward or not? And so, Mr. Connolly brought up, in terms of decision-making, brought up that in years past, some other members of the community, because this building, while we, we're the school committee, this building is really a town building too, and the whole town helped support this. And I think, you know, there were concerns raised by previous select board members, by other people in town about, would this damage the roof? Like, we've invested $100 million in this building. So, I think Mr. Connolly correctly said we should really hear from the select board and the, you know, maybe through finance planning team. He suggested that possibly bring that up there. Hear whatever concerns they had. If they thought it was a good idea, then maybe we would vote on it afterwards. But we thought it made sense to maybe start today. And I think there's pros and cons of each approach, but that's sort of the history. I'll let Michael jump in and see if I missed anything, or?
Yeah, I think that was a great history. So, solar is something that, as Mr. Buckley certainly said, has been on our, our minds for a while. It's, we've been exploring it and kind of looking at it at various different times. I think since the, really since this building has sort of opened. I can recall going back to, you know, 2013, 14, um, when the building was kind of first coming online. At the time, RMLD, obviously who's our utility provider, had presented an option mainly to use the, take advantage of the brand-new roof and put some panels. And I think it was, it sort of was similar. I think it was a little bit less. I think we're, we're talking more like $18,000 to $20,000 at the time. But then that was going back to 2014 and 15. So, we've always sort of been looking at it. We've always been interested in just seeing if we can find the right, the right fit. I, as, as Mr. Buckley laid out, I certainly, we've always tried to approach it. Is, is there a solar program out there that's the right fit, both environmentally for us, for the community, as well as economically and, and financially? So, we've, um, we've had a few different times where we've looked at RMLD's programs. And then, the most aggressive approach we took was a couple of years ago, as Mr. Buckley laid out, where we did our own RFP. Thought we had a home run, and then we had to back out, back off, and we realized that we didn't. So, I, I think, I think it's also important to kind of recognize that some of the, the disadvantages that we are in, it's sort of like a, a positive thing, but it's also when you look at solar, that some challenges or disadvantages financially, is that because we're a municipal light plant district, or MLP as they call it, we already receive a lot of our energy at a very discounted price. So, we're not out there kind of in the market, national grid, paying 18-plus kilowatt per hour. We've already, our, our utility and our rates are already significantly discounted. So, that, that's good in one way, but then it, it limit, it sort of limits the, the economic or the financial incentives or savings when you bring solar in, into the equation. And I think we've always looked at it, is, could that change? Could there be a new incentive or tax incentive or something that could be offered that could change that and could lead to greater savings? And to me, it hasn't changed a lot in the last seven years. I think we've done a lot of due diligence. We haven't kind of ignored it. We've been looking at it. But it's been, we've kind of known, I think we've kind of known there's a number in the, in the $18,000 to $25,000 range kind of out there that could be, could be achieved mainly through this middle school, high school roof. Because quite honestly, this is the largest square footage, clearly. This is the largest array that could be most easily accessible and most attractive for a solar firm to come in and install.
And, and Michael, just on that one quick thing, the, what makes this advantageous now is it's, it, it's a size roof where they could put a battery up there, where they could charge the battery and use it off hours, or at hours that they need it. Smaller roofs, like the little school roof, wouldn't be big enough to have a battery. And so, it's, you have to get to a certain size in order to use a battery, which makes it economically feasible.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, so then the other piece of it is, we are in sort of a closed franchise. So, any excess power from, from the array does need to be sold back to, to RMLD. So, there's that in itself, I think, that I've learned as I've gone through this process and, and, and the conversations we've had most recently. I think, and I think some of the committee members that were here, RMLD did present back in March, and they kind of wait, went through some of these options at each, each location, that I think the financials, I think I've come to kind of realize, at least right now, and it doesn't seem like it's going to change, um, there's not really a six-figure sort of savings out there with, with solar. Um, there's, there's really, it's, the, the savings it seems to be is more in, in the range and the offerings that we're, we're talking about tonight, in that, in that $25,000 range. What, so what that, what that makes me really, I guess, pause on is the fact that what I would be concerned about, and this is where Scott and I were discussing the other day and when we were, heard the presentation from, from Select, is this would be a 25-year fixed contract, um, for $25,000 a year over those, over that 25, 25 years, which would lead to about, you know, a little over, you know, certainly greater than $500,000, $500,000, you know, $625,000 over the 25 years. So, I think, and I think I, what we need to kind of think about when we weigh that, the pros and cons of that, is certainly the time, the time value of money is important. Obviously, time is money. It's, it's a, it would be a fixed, it's a fixed proposal. So, over time, I think that the value of that $25,000 is obviously going to, is going to go down. And then, what I would want to really think about, and I've had a little bit of conversations, and Sonny Campagno is here, so I did let him know this is being explored. I just wanted to hear his thoughts from a maintenance perspective, is that in the outer years, sort of years 11 through, through 25, when we might start to experience a little more roof, roof-type issues, maintenance issues, access issues, where we need to kind of access areas of the roof that the array is now on, to investigate an issue not caused by the array, but just caused by general wear and tear that, you know, we would really want to think about what that cost is going to be to, to remove panels and install back, back on, or just to, to, the, the general maintenance of that. And, and speaking with, um, Select and some of the language they sent me, you know, they would certainly have to install the array and, and take the steps to protect our roof warranty and to take every step necessary to not have damage caused by the installation. But would not be covered is if there is a maintenance issue or something that does cause the array to have to be removed temporarily and reinstalled, that we would need to pay for that. So, I guess, in looking at those types of things, I think, I think the pros and cons that we have to kind of weigh is, is the, is 25 years at $25,000 in the long term? Is that economically a, um, a good option for, for the district? And I think, you know, I certainly took, have some concerns with that, certainly in the outer years. I think in the short term, um, when this roof is certainly, you know, less than 15 years old, I think it, there's, there's some positives to it. I think $25,000, it will, could be helpful. We always are, sometimes we're always, that, we're always looking for every dollar and, um, during the budgetary process. Um, and sometimes $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 is even helpful. So, certainly, it's nothing to shy away from. It's, it's certainly revenue, and it's, it's no cost for us for it to be installed upfront. But I think we need to really think about when we weigh this decision, is the outer years of that, and is, is the long, the, you know, to me, it's years 15 to 25, or even 11 to, to 25, is, is are we going to be putting ourselves in a situation where, um, with the time, where the, the return on investment goes, goes down each year, and then the, the maintenance and the upkeep and just the general access of the, of the roof starts to outweigh the, the financial gain, is something that I would just, I would offer to just think about.
But before we open up, let's start looking at, talking about pros and cons. Just a couple more quick things to set the stage. For tonight, I don't think we're looking to vote yes necessarily. If a majority of the committee says, "This is a stupid idea", I think we can say no tonight, and we don't have to bring it up and have the select board like it, or, you know. You don't, we don't have to go down the road where we're like, "No". If I, but I think if we're like not quite sure yet, we can say, "Let's hear other concerns" and go from there. Second thing on the, on the warranty issue, I mean, Mike did an excellent job, as he always does in the meeting, and brought up the warranty. He, he grabbed the warranty from our roof, which essentially says that if you're going to install solar panels, you need to get permission in advance. So, they would need to work together. The Select Energy did that.
Correct, yeah.
But the other que, the other thing that came up, and we won't have a full answer to this yet about exactly how they would be installed up there, but they did mention because it is a flat roof, it wouldn't be as difficult or damaging potentially because if it was a slanted roof, it would have, you'd obviously have to be attached in a much different way than if it was a flat roof, or the, the weight of the arrays, I imagine, actually helps keep it down. And from an aesthetic standpoint, it would be back from the edge. So, you might not even see it at all up there. But we all have ideas on, on positives and negatives, but I think...
Yeah, I think, right.
Yeah, oh, and the last thing I would just say is, I also want to very much appreciate that, while we're making the decision, I understand that Dr. Daly, Mr. Connolly, Sonny will be the ones that are actually dealing with our decision. And so, I, I very much appreciate that. And, you know, you're already dealing with a wastewater treatment facility, which wasn't probably in your job description in the very beginning. But it's, I very much appreciate that when we're weighing that. And so, I know that Michael might not want to say that, but I know that would be putting a lot on him as well, so.
No, I appreciate that.
But, but open to, really want to hear what people's thoughts are. I mean, my job was really to get something, and I think it's fair to say we don't see anything more than maybe $30,000 a year, if it ends up getting that extra $120. I think this is kind of the option. So, we either say yes or no, but now I open it up, and I know just been...
Yeah, chomping a bit.
Jump in to go?
So, a few thoughts. I mean, first off, you sort of got to, we sort of have to think about doing this sooner rather than later because the roof's not getting younger. And your concerns don't get better over time, they get worse, right? Because it's the age of the roof that we're worried about. So, if we're on year eight now, you know, you either do it pretty soon or, or those concerns grow. But what we're also really talking about is the difference between, it's, it's the delta between normal maintenance, call it X, and, and what the maintenance would be with, with solar, call it X plus, whatever.
Sure, yeah.
And does that exceed what we would presumably put into like, you know, if we're getting $30,000 a year, you probably set something aside for the rainy day, or we probably think about that, right? Uh, at least I would sort of think about that, think about it that way. You know, set aside $5,000 a year. It adds up, and then suddenly, in year 15, we've got a fund that can pay for itself, or at least that's sort of my thought on it. To me, let's assume for a moment that we can justify cost, just assuming that just for a moment. To me, the two plus sides that I see on it are, one, I mean, um, school. First thing I think about, and I was doing a little research on it, is there are a ton of great educational programs that can be done in association with something like this. Aside from even just solar power, you know, just battery, uh, research. Talk about a hot topic, not just now, but in the next 20 years. Show me the person that revolution, that revolutionizes battery. I'll show you the person that changes the world. Uh, I can, you know, there are plenty of Musk, Dyson, who have invested billions, literally billions of dollars in the concept of battery. To me, it's a great life laboratory lesson of, can we do it better? And look what we've got, you know, and we can do it right here in our school. So, to me, there's a great educational value. Two, two, there's also sort of that intangible quality of, can we make our school even, you know, it's, talk about an advertising element of, can we attract more better people to work in our schools, talk, think about educators to say, "Hey, look, we're forward-thinking"? So, to me, there, there are two elements of like tangible and semi-tangible of pros. But again, it does come back to, can we make the numbers work? Obviously, if the numbers go south, then it's not like it, it matters whether we can attract more people if we can't hire more people. So, um, those, those are my initial thoughts on it.
Yeah. Dr. Daly, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to adjust those, can you hear me?
Yep, yeah.
Just wanted to address those comments, and, uh, thank you for the presentation. And thank you, Scott, for all the work on this goal this year. Just want to remind everyone that last year, when we had a presentation, there, there was a component, basically, the end result of that presentation was, the most viable solution for us was to have a solar, um, array outside on the ground that would be a learning opportunity. And we still are committed to doing that. I think that's a great idea. I think all the powerful benefits can be learned from that, uh, display on the ground and much more accessible for the students than something on the roof. I think it's very simple about this being a, a problem of, will, do the, you know, the risk reward, right? So, do the benefits of... So do the benefits of this array outweigh the the possible issues and damage to the roof? And I don't know that it's necessarily going to get worse with time. If that's an older roof, yes, the roof is more damaged, but the the needs associated with having to repair or damage it is much less as time goes on. So I I think there's a lot of reason to wait to see whether we can either get more from this, or that, you know, to say that $25,000 to $30,000 is not sufficient for the potential of what could be an issue caused to the roof.
Diana?
A question and then a comment. There is no guarantee that that $25,000 to $30,000 would even be allocated to the schools. Is that correct?
So it's a good question. So the with what we already got approved at town meeting back in June of 2020, we did, because we thought we had a viable contract and and solar firm to to work with, we did get the approvals to for a few few, we had three articles that got that got approved. One was the right for us to to rent the space on the roof, as well as in our the grounds on this property, because at the time, there was a small ground array that was a part of that proposal. So that was that was approved. And then the the second part of it was the right for us to, even if we'd ever decided to actually try to use the energy, install it back to RMLD in sort of a power purchase agreement, that was approved. And then the third item that was approved was a special revenue revolving account to deposit the the real estate lease payments, in a sense, to offset the school's energy costs. So it would come right directly into that, you know, special revenue account that would be used to offset the utility costs in in this location. So we would be able to use the funds. I did have a brief conversation on Friday afternoon with RMLD, and they, the gentleman that presented a year ago, he he's looking into that question on the incentive as well. His belief on it was that because we're looking to put it in front of the meter and not use the energy, that it's strictly that we're not going to own the array, that because we're it's going to be owned by Select, that that takes the incentive off the table. I know that I know the gentleman in Select was still researching researching that piece. He felt that was the case, but he was going to research it further as well. But that is that is sort of a a dependent question where you could you get a little bit more or not. And so that answers your question.
Yeah. And then just, you know, my my thoughts is that I'm a little bit more risk adverse on this one, more than anything. I think, you know, I've always been supportive of the the solar goal. And I think, like, you know, doing the due diligence is always worth it and to continue to explore options. But, yeah, you know, in terms of the potential maintenance risks and things of that nature for, you know, what you're talking about in terms of numbers, it's also hard to compare that to, you know, what could it be? Is is that worth it? A 25, did you say 25-year commitment?
25-year commitment.
Yeah, that's that's a long duration without enough, you know, what else is there out there? I know this was easy, because we're part of the consortium and all of that. But, you know, I know we've done due diligence in the past, but that, to me, I I know it's a good amount of money, but it doesn't seem significant enough for what I could foresee down the road in terms of risk and concern. But that's just my gut reaction.
Yeah. And I'm gonna, and I see Mrs. Clonan, but I want to go through the committee, and then I also want to hear from Sonny, too, but.
I had a question and a comment. I just wanted to clarify on what Dr. Daley said about the ground array, if that is tied in with the roof array, or if that's completely separate? Because I I was a little, at first, I thought it was the same, and then just.
So it's not part of this proposal that we've recently received with Select through the Power Options Consortium, they're strictly looking at the roof. But we've had conversations with RMLD and certain firms that they looked at, says they've gone out, they're they're trying to be very aggressive with solar as well, and they've been doing that over a number of years, and they continue to to explore any opportunities. So they've put out requests for information and their own proposals. And one of the areas that they'd be interested, very interested in, is partnering with this with a firm, could be Select, it could be someone else, to install a smaller ground array system on the school school grounds, that would certainly not lead to any really big revenue gain, but it would be more sort of educational in nature. That was one of the things that the gentleman from RMLD spoke to, you know, certainly last last March, last spring.
Okay, all right. So you get the value of the 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 experience and for your to for for students to solar and perhaps some hands-on activity without a 25-year commitment. And I I sort of like, I hesitate, because I think like, this is a very exciting opportunity, and we do have this giant roof. But the 25-year commitment is a little daunting, especially given the fact that what's the technology that's out in five more years, that we would then, at that point, be able to get into perhaps a different contract where there's even more savings? I mean, the technology, from what I understand, is constantly changing. I don't, I have to admit, I'm not an expert on solar, but but to lock ourselves into 25 years does seem like a bit excessive. But again, I'm I'm very open-minded, and I think it's a great idea. So I don't want to discount that.
Are you saying thoughts?
Yeah. So I don't pretend to understand the economics that go into their proposal. But I do know that we're prior to maybe eight, 10, 12 months ago, we've been experiencing what I think is probably an historically low level of energy prices adjusted for inflation. So it would seem to me this would be a really bad time to lock in a price for 25 years. And we've seen the price, and again, I don't know how the price of oil and the price of natural gas directly impacts their calculations for this kind of project, but they're going up right now, and they always go up, and then they come down again. But, you know, it's been it's been a really historical low period of energy prices. And that would seem to me to be, you know, buying this at a red, inversely high price, if you will. So I guess the other comment I have is on the the maintenance issues, I think, understanding what their product is, what their construction is, would go a long way to us understanding. You know, Mr. Campagni could maybe tell me if I'm wrong, but, you know, just knowing what they're proposing and and how difficult that is to remove, so you can do maintenance and then put it back in place. Is that really, is that a hard thing, or is that an easy thing? We can find out more about that.
You can't do that in house.
Right, but.
It's like, the lights of the electrician, so we've all got one of the staff.
Yep.
Hang on, hang on. Let me, let me, just so you can be heard.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Definitely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so so you have a maintenance issue pertaining to the roof. I'm more worried about stress cracks over time, because we've seen it within our other roofs with the same style roofing membrane. The membrane is is white for a reason. It's for our snow reflection, so it melts. You know, putting these panels on the roof, are we going to get a a bigger snow load, maybe, because we're not melting off? So we have to look at that as well. We had them at Great Alarn Sanitary District. Believe it or not, we had a bird problem with them. They started putting nesting in all of them. And in turn, it was a cleaning nightmare. Well, we eventually just gave up. We were putting this huge system, this noise system, it worked for about a summer, and they and they got around that. So that's another issue we, you know, that may or may not happen here, it all depends. Also, we had organic growth on them. And in turn, it was creating hotspots, and you were getting the same power output. So everyone thinks they're great. They're all right. They're not great. We've had, you know, we've had the same promise of energy savings. In turn, in the long run, it wasn't the same. So I mean, those are just some of the small problems.
I think that's great. And I think that's the kind of thing you definitely would want to address with the provider.
Right.
How they would address those issues.
And what Select spoke to, I mean, they certainly spoke to that the technology's even advanced in the last five years, when we first started looking at it, 2017, 15, even even 2020, referenced on the call that things are different. So they're they're certainly, you know, they certainly think the way they install and the way they do things protects protects the structure of the roof.
But also, you know, how they would maintain some of the issues that Mr. Campagni mentions, you know, the hotspots and the birds and the and the growth and all that, yeah.
So, you know, the two things for me that just give me the biggest pause, and I and I I want to, I've certainly been trying to find the the right fit for for five to seven years, is the 25-year piece, and that just the time value of that, that the $25,000 not seeming like it's a a big enough number to give me comfort in the outer years? And then just the fixed the fixed contract, if there was an escalator to that, I would feel a little bit better about it.
Especially at these, yeah, that's a starting point we're at.
So I'll jump in my comments in a second. But Mrs. Clonan, I saw you had your hand up. Did you have any questions or thoughts? I don't hear any. So I mean, my my thoughts, I mean, I I, again, I was supposed to investigate this, and I'm I'm honestly very torn on this one. You know, a few years ago, I was very much in the camp of it's it has to be worthwhile financially. And, you know, I think I think there is an educational value. I think there is something to be said for just overall trying, even if we're not using the energy, if we're generating energy that can be used by the community in a way that's not fossil fuels, I think it's a good thing. I think more and more regulations are going to start requiring this. Maybe we have an obligation to take care of this building that, you know, the town has given to us, which, you know, what is taken care of it? Is it making sure that we don't have stress fractures? Is it utilizing it where we can do an offset? I don't know. I I'm very much up in the air on it. But I think what I would probably come down on if I had to vote on it was, I think our administrators have a very hard job already. And I don't really want to put a lot of stress on on Michael, I mean, and and Dr. Daley and Sonny. I mean, I just think that, you know, just like we say about a lot of things, we try to stay out of the way, we try to hire people and stay out of their way. I think we do have to hear from you guys, and you guys are the ones that are going to be dealing with it. I'm not going to be the one, you know, trying to get something removed because there's a leak in a classroom or anything like that. And, you know, 25 years from now, I probably will not be sitting here still. And so, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of where I fall back on. I mean, if this was $300,000, I might say, too bad, Michael, you have another job description. But I think for $25,000, I don't know if it's worth putting it on on you guys, if 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 that's what you guys feel. That's sort of where I where I come around. I don't know.
Yeah, the 25-year for for just with no escalation, just the dull upside just doesn't seem.
Is there anybody else who's done this? Like, is there any?
So it's funny.
Like, plus or minus, let's.
Yeah, I asked them that question. I asked Power Options in both Select and.
Because if no one else has done it before, that tells you something, too.
We'd want to investigate that more. They they've mentioned that there was, you know, some districts doing it.
It done solo. They haven't done the battery like we were talking about.
The batteries adds a component to it. The battery wasn't part of this program two years ago. So I'd want to know that for sure. I'd want to see a list of communities, municipalities. They couldn't really give me a lot of information or detail on they've done that for that type of, you know, value, I would say.
Sure.
So the the other thing that I guess I just would, that I'm not 100% convinced on, is the the representative from Select, who I know is under diligence and her homework, kind of mentioned that she felt like things couldn't be bundled, and the elementary schools, because they're so small, they really had to, they couldn't be sort of bundled as part of our in front of the meter package that could make 25 go to 35 even, if you go with the hood, we're going to be looking to do the hood school roof in a year, and the little is relatively new. Where I I don't believe that's what RMLD was saying to us a year ago. I think they were saying, let's, you know, maybe we can work with the community, and maybe the town has some space, and maybe you guys have some space, and maybe there's some some ground space, and we can kind of bundle something. So that's the only thing that she said that I wasn't 100% convinced on.
I think it was just the, it doesn't make sense to put a battery there, and so to do a battery one. And what she was saying is, what she was saying is, you have to have a certain amount of space for it to be worthwhile that way. You'd have to literally just, like, we could get the $120,000 incentive by paying for the arrays to put them up on top of the little school, but then we would literally be paying more per watt than we would by the discounted rate we get right now from RMLD. And I don't know. I mean, I I I hear you on energy's low right now, but I feel like we've, for seven years, it's been about the same amount. And so.
It's been low, but it's been historically low for a historically long period of time.
Yeah. But I mean, I think I think the point is we waited for a little bit. I don't know. I mean, we we wanted to look into it. We wanted to see if there's any incentives out there. We, you know, I mean, we were looking at whether we could get, you know, even even have our local representatives help help us. But I don't know if this is the project to do it on. I don't know.
I think that's right.
Again, I mean, I I wouldn't mind getting more money. I mean, like, we can always offset something else. But at the same time, this is, you know, not even half an FTE, this is, you know, and in 20 years, this isn't, you know, it's going to be worth, you know, $12,000 in 20 years. And I don't know. I mean, I I again, I I sort of would come down on if if Michael's against it. I mean, generally speaking, you know, if you're a gambler, or certain people that you don't bet against, I don't bet my money against Michael on most things. And so I would just say, you know, if if Michael's on this side, it's probably a fool's bet to be against him. And so that's sort of where I would come down on it right now. And I don't know that we need to, you know, waste other people's times. But I just just we just kind of wanted to discuss it amongst everybody here and see what people's thoughts are. It sounds like, Noel, would you say not, I mean, again, we can basically say, let's get more information, I'm really in favor of it, or I don't think it's worth getting more, so.
Well, at this point, given what we've heard, I 25 years is a long time. Technology's constantly changing. RMLD may have opportunities a few years down the road that we could explore. So for me, no, unless, again, Michael was to say something drastically different.
Yeah. And and again, like, I mean, eventually, the roof will be too old to do it. So I don't think we can just say, like, oh, in 10 years, we'll do it. But.
Or then, or you.
But I hear you.
Or you incorporate it into a a new roof project, which which is what would make the most sense. But that's but that's 20 years down the line.
And again, who knows what that what's the cells, the cell technology is changing, and so much.
They, that's right, because they could have a membrane that is, in fact, the solar collector, right? I mean, as opposed to just a whole separate thing.
Rich.
Yeah, I think this particular proposal is, I mean, unless they come back and say, I mean, obviously, you're going to tell them what we think. And and they'll either go, fine, we'll we'll talk to somebody else, or they'll say, or maybe they'll come back. But if they don't, I, yeah.
I don't think there'd be more money. They've been very open with us about it. And, I mean, yeah. Diane, I know.
I I probably do lean more toward yes. But, I mean, to me, I want to get I want to get others who have done it to say, yeah, this is a good thing. If if no one, if we can't get names of people that have actually done this and give it a thumbs up, to me, that's a huge red flag of, wow.
I think I think we, she said we could get references.
We can get.
Yeah, I want to, I want some pretty solid references and people who've done it before.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could get references from them. But it wouldn't be a battery. It'd be a different thing. This is a different type of project. But, you know, and again, the fact that they've won from this association, like, there's been other districts here that have done it. I I feel I feel that the company's been very good.
Yeah, I think they're very, I've heard very good things about Select. Yeah, that they're, and even RMLD speaks very favorable of them.
Yeah, I think I think that's been fine. It's just overall, I just think.
That's fair.
You know, and and again, like, I if a lot of people here are like, oh, it's worth it, you know, it's $30,000, maybe we can lower a fee, we can do this, we could do that, like, I could hear that. But.
But we just don't know if it's $30,000.
Well, you, I mean, even 25.
But I mean, we don't know, we don't know what the risk is.
Correct.
The hard part is evaluating the risk. That's really what we're all saying, is we don't know, we don't know what the what the risk is, and we don't know, and there's no upside.
Yeah. And putting it, putting the management on, you know, overly worked employees already is is hard to do. Okay.
We shouldn't forget about it, but we shouldn't pursue it right now.
Okay. So I think I can reach out to Sarah and just sort of say, we had a discussion, it's probably not something we're going to do, we'll pass on it. Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm just blaming you in the email.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
But there would be the the idea to, again, not close the discussion on it, but, you know, continue to, you know, down the road.
Yeah, certainly, the like, the educational piece, I think, was Dr. Daley said earlier, and you had great comments, I think we all feel that way. I think we should, you know, maybe not risking the the structure of the the roof over 25 years, but maybe. 25 years, but maybe we can look at a smaller ground away and it's not, then you're not looking, it's no revenue piece, but you're, you're trying to capture the educational piece component to a degree.
Yeah, and I, and it also does sort of sound like working with RMLD is the, the, I don't know if it's the best option, but they're there, they're.
We have to work with them.
We have to work with them.
They have to be the third party.
If they can come up with a program, it might be more, just generally more beneficial, especially if we can incorporate other parts of the town, other buildings of the town.
Okay, well, I will reach out. I completed my project and, okay. Okay, moving on. School committee reorganization. So, we reorganized the main roles, but now we have to do the subcommittee stuff, so Dr. Daley included a list of the roles we have. Every year, we've done this slightly differently. I think what makes the most sense is to just sort of have an informal discussion. Thank you, Sonny, for your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I think what makes the most sense is perhaps, perhaps to just kinda have people kind of talk about what their interests are, what they wanna do, but why don't we start first with the ones that we know are what they are? So, I mean, the finance planning committee has to be chairs and vice chair, so those are done. Secondary school building committee, has already been voted on. I have been, have I been sworn in by the select board? I don't remember if I have yet or not. I don't even.
Only you would know.
I don't even know if we did this or not. I think, I think I was. Yes, I was. I was, because I, I participated in last one. Do we have to?
We do the joint meeting.
Yes, do we have to have two representatives on that, Patrick?
I don't believe so.
So, we could leave that as just me for now, if we don't want, I mean, the school's built. I mean, it's just a matter of closing it out after the litigation is done?
I believe we only have one member. I think we're only allowed that one.
Well, Janine and I were both at the last meeting, so we, we had two on there then.
She's grandfathered in.
Yeah, she was.
I don't know. But, okay, so, so I don't think we have to do that one right now. Okay, so then, beyond that, I'm, I'm curious mostly about like, you know, our new members. What are, what are your passions? What are, are there certain things in particular that you like and, I mean, normally, the new people do get policy just to tell you upfront.
I know, I thought we got the.
I would, I would suggest that you should be interested in policy, because I think you'll be on policy, but.
That's fine.
Beyond that, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I'm interested personally in the arts.
Okay.
That's something that piques my interest for sure.
Okay.
Uh, well, I am interested in policy.
Good. Good answer.
Uh, I mean, I, for me, it's more about where I could be most useful. I'm, I'm fine just about anywhere. Despite my, my recent comments, I, I am also interested in infrastructure, so, um, so I think that's great, uh, but just about anywhere.
So, looking, and, and Diana, what do you like, are there things you didn't like?
I would advocate for staying on the two that I am assigned to right now.
Which is about athletic and budget.
Athletic and budget, yes.
Okay, and Rich, any particular passions or?
I am, uh, would like to continue on the fine arts subcommittee. I probably need to start attending NORCAM meetings if I'm gonna continue, but, um, cause I've completely lost contact with Rob on that stuff, so, um, you know, I'm happy to keep doing, to, to do a better job at that if, if, if nobody else wants to take that on. Um, you know, I think the, you know, I'm not sure where, where people stand on the budget and, uh, committee, but, um, there's some, certainly areas I'm willing to step in if, if there's, you know.
Budget's an interesting one where, I think even if we did a budget and finance, it's separate from finance planning, I think perhaps you and I, if we're the finance planning reps, we should maybe have a meeting with Dr. Daley and Michael just before it's presented to the full committee. So, I think even if it comes from the budget, cause the, the original intent of the budget subcommittee was really to kind of look a little bit deeper at some of like, you know, where the thoughts came from, things that didn't make it to the school committee, sort of like, why we prioritized this or that. Some of what we've done is sort of like how to present it the first time. Like, we've talked about, you know, for example, the substitutes. We wanted, you know, we did building substitutes one year and then we sort of talked about like, we like that plan, let's just put it in there, let's not call out that it's an addition, things like that. So, I think having one person that's on the finance planning and somebody that's not, I think has been useful, but we could, we should also maybe meet a little bit before we present, you know, the finance planning as well, because we're already on there, so I think we could have a meeting without the actual full finance planning too.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Dr. Daley?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention also, if not everyone's aware, when, when these groups meet might be a consideration too with your schedules and the, um, you know, the, some that are just myself and the committee, excuse me, policy subcommittee, evaluation subcommittee, budget and finance, we can more easily schedule those. Athletic subcommittee is typically during the school day, as is the, um, the.
Fine art.
Fine arts committee. The substance abuse coalition is typically during the school day, usually earlier in the day. So, I, I don't control those meetings, there's much less flexibility over when we schedule those. And the capital improvements has typically been in the evening, but I think there's been some daytime more recently, Michael, is that correct?
Yeah, this year, they tried something different. It was more because of some members on the select board schedule. It actually occurred pretty consistently about like 8:00, 8:00 AM.
Yeah, seems to be the operative time.
So, I just, I just wanted to share that to make sure everyone was aware.
And, and just calling out the areas without, again, we'll, we'll kinda walk through this together and decide this together, but just calling out the areas where I feel like we're, we really need somebody. Evaluation, Janine and Chris were both on evaluation. I will tell you right now, I'm bad at that area, and so I think that's, that's something I think we'd really look for somebody on. And then capital improvement planning committee is a very important one, I think. Diana, Diana, I agree to run if, if we agree to never ask her to be on that again. That is a condition already, but, you know, if, like, if Jeff was interested in some of the budget stuff, I think that might be.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
One for you, but.
The evaluation doesn't scare me.
Good. Well, why don't we, so, we can make motions on this afterwards, but just kinda walk through. So, policy, I would think Jeff and Noel.
Yeah.
There we go. Athletics, so Diana's on there, one more person for athletics subcommittee. It's a, it's a, it's a midday meeting. And we, we don't, we can keep it open for now or just, but is there anybody that is particularly interested in athletics?
Let me ask Dr. Daley, are those two meetings always, they seem like they're often back to back, or am I remembering that wrong? The, the fine arts and athletic?
We can schedule those whenever we like to. I was doing that during COVID especially out of convenience for people.
Okay.
But they're typically during the day, but we can schedule them whenever we need to.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Daley, are you gonna keep the virtual option available for some of those midday meetings? Are you gonna close that at some point?
I, well, I will say, I would keep them open. I think that's fair. Typically, I, I'll double check whether there's any reason not to do that, but I'm, I think we should be able to do that moving forward.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm not really fooling around. I'm fine to jump in athletic, cause other people don't want it, but I don't know if anybody has particular interest in it, so.
Yeah, I was kind of waiting to see if you guys had any interest.
Okay, so you and I can maybe decide sort of, sort of at the end.
That's on how it balances out, yeah.
Yeah. Um, evaluation. Noel, kind of raised her hand on this one. I don't know if anybody else. Jeff, you got an educator in your.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Maybe Noel and Jeff.
It's not unusual for the two newbies to be on multiple committees together. I don't know how that, it does happen.
Budget and finance, Diana, you said you wanna stay on. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind staying on that part of it too.
That's fine.
Unless someone tells me I can't do it, I will keep virtual options for those who need it. Okay. Um, contract review, we didn't really have that. Oh, the one thing we have to add to this though is, we should also think about, there's three contracts to be negotiated this year.
Right.
We should also sort of assign that as well. So, what are the ones this year? Para professionals, custodians, and administrative assistants?
We don't, we don't necessarily need someone for everyone, but we have had some different times in the past. I think the most recent time, we haven't had a super major for administrative assistance, and we, we certainly have a need too, but.
Yeah.
I mean, you could almost have one person do all of them.
Yeah.
Cause they're, cause they're low. I mean, the paras, we spent some time on paras last time, but.
Well, the other thing is that like for somebody newer, like a custodian or administrative assistant would be a really nice entry into it.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I, I would prefer not to do the paraprofessional one, just because my son has a one-to-one and I've worked with a lot of them and not that we can't, again, in any way saying that I don't think people could separate.
But it's.
But just from a conflict standpoint, I don't really want to do that myself, so.
We can, we can leave that a little open and, cause I'm happy to step in as needed.
You did the paras last time.
I did the paras last time and as you say, we worked out a lot of issues, so hopefully this time it'll be a little easier.
Be easier.
And it wasn't hard last time, it just was multiple meetings and it sounds like the other ones should be fairly straightforward.
The other ones are pretty easy, and so like if other people wanted to.
So, we can, we can make those calls a little closer too, if, and just see who has.
Yeah, just, just, just thinking ahead, like, you know, as distribution of weight, like, cause again, the para one will probably take longer than some of the other ones and so I just don't wanna overburden you on this.
I'm definitely interested in that.
Okay.
But, uh, I'd wanna see how, how it runs and get a little more experience on it, but, uh.
Oh, I jumped in quickly, so it's pretty, it's pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty much for the custody one, Michael and Patrick will tell us what we're doing and we'll just.
You're a lot smarter than I am, though.
Yeah.
Hey, they will kind of lead us on it.
I mean, honestly, that's generally true for all the contracts, so, I mean, you know.
That's fine.
We're.
Yeah. Okay, so athletic, we gotta come back to valuation, maybe Noel and Jeff, budget and finance, Diana and myself, fine arts, Rich and Noel, we think.
I think so.
NORCAM, again, we can look and see what, if, you know, you wanna stay on that one or not, Rich, after we kinda get through it all. Finance planning, you and me. Substance abuse coalition, anyone interested in substance abuse coalition?
Is it, was that the morning one? That's the.
That's during the school days, he said. We do need somebody on that one.
Patrick, can you say again, was that like the 8:00 AM morning?
No, that was the capital improvement.
They, they do have mornings, Dan. I intend, I wanna say, you know, some of you can't petition those to change, but I'm, I'm not in charge to say those meetings, they're run by CIP and like.
No, the CIPC typically meets at like 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
Although they said they.
Yeah, they, for the first time this year, they went for, yeah, it went from 4:00, 4:30 to 8:00 AM. I know.
Makes it even more of a joy.
Yeah.
Substance abuse is, I mean, again, like, I could jump in if I needed to as well, although they're, they're the group that really disliked me when I voted somebody down a couple of years ago.
Looks like they've been 10:00 AM this year.
10:00 AM.
Is it ever a typical day or is that, it's not a set day of the week, just cause?
Is it a set day, Dr. Daley?
And frequency?
I, I think it's usually, hey, I'm trying to figure out which day it is right now. I can look that.
I mean, 10:00 AM is the worst time in the world for me because.
That's a brutal time.
Is it, is it quarterly?
How often do they meet, Dr. Daley? Do you know?
I believe it's, I believe it's monthly.
It's a month? Um, okay, we can keep thinking about it.
Yeah.
I mean, CPAC, I'm happy to stay on CPAC if people want.
I know.
Capital improvement, I mean, I think Jeff would be.
Yep, that's fine.
Decent on that one. And then secondary school, I don't think we need, again, that doesn't really meet.
You're on, right.
I'm on it officially if we have a meeting.
Right.
So, if we look.
That's fine.
So, if we look through right now, just kind of going through, um, so policy would have Jeff and Noel. I'm just, I'm just trying to give you numbers here.
Yeah.
Diana would have one here, then we'd have an open spot here. Evaluation would be Noel and Jeff. Budget and finance is Diana. Fine arts is Rich and Noel. NORCAM, I guess we'll, we'll keep it open for now, but finance planning would be me and you. Substance abuse, we're keeping open. CPAC is me. Improvement is Jeff. I'm not counting secondary school, cause we're, we're not really meeting, so.
Yep, yep.
So, we're pretty even.
Yeah, threes and twos, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, I would take another one, but from a feasibility standpoint with my work, the only two I could step on is probably evaluation and fine arts in terms of schedule, so.
Well, what, what's more, what's beneficial, are you evenings or morning or like?
No, like something like that meets quarterly, that has the virtual option if it's in the middle of the day. The mornings are what.
I think those are taken.
Well, you're already on athletic, so you can't get on it a second time.
So, let me take athle, let me take athletic, the other spot on athletic, unless somebody really wants it.
That's fine, you can do that one. I, I would've done it if you didn't want to, so. That's fine, you can do that one. I, I would have done it if you didn't want to, so. You on athletic? Dr. Daly, thought?
Just sharing, the substance abuse meetings have been at 12:00, usually on Mondays.
At what, 12:30?
The last several meetings have been on Mondays.
Okay.
On Mondays, you said?
And so then we have NORCAM, we have substance abuse. And I could jump into.
I could do substance abuse. I just wonder, like, since I'm brand new, obviously, what's the time commitment beyond that 12:30 every month meeting?
I don't think substance abuse is too much.
Okay.
I mean.
I, I have, I have flexibility during the day. There's some days I don't have as much, but.
Okay.
And Rich, I know the NORCAM one has been like borderline unfeasible, but I'm happy to give that a shot if it's.
You want to do that one? Evening?
Yeah.
I can always go back to it if you want to.
And it's always at night, so I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll do actual motions.
Cindy. So, okay, that seems pretty even across the board. I think that's kind of like three for everybody.
Yeah, I think so.
Honestly, so.
I think I just put myself on.
On for the.
Oh, you got fourth.
But.
Good, you win.
That's a tough one. That is a tough one to schedule, so if you can do it, if you need to come off something else, let us know.
Do I get a prize, or?
Okay, so why don't we do this? So, can I have a motion to? The motion for.
I think we can go through it, right?
Jeff and Noel to be on the policy subcommittee.
Can we do them together?
You want them all together?
So we just say we can do them together? Make a rule right now?
That's fine. So how about this? Can I do a motion to appoint Jeff and Noel the policy subcommittee, Diana and Rich to athletics.
Oh, I, I was, I was thinking.
Each, each one.
To, to, one vote for each committee, so.
That I started with.
I'm sorry, I did not.
That's what I started with.
Then I didn't understand. I apologize. So let me, let me say this. I move that we appoint Jeff Friedman and Noel.
Rodloff.
Rodloff.
You saw my name all over town.
I know. Uh, to the policy subcommittee.
Second. Second by Diana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Um, I'm, I'm on the next one, so somebody else can make that motion for athletic.
Jeff, you want to make a motion?
For Diana and Rich.
For Diana and Rich for athletics subcommittee?
Uh, yes, sir.
You were just saying I'm making nomination to nominate them.
Yes.
Oh, are we, are we, do we have to do a motion to nominate first and then?
No, that I, my motion is to nominate.
I nominate, yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what I said.
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely.
There we go. Okay.
So if I do this wrong, feel free to.
Edit it.
I make a motion to nominate Diana and Rich to the athletics subcommittee.
Second.
Second by Diana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Rich, you want to?
I make a motion to nominate Noel and Jeff to the evaluation subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I make a motion to nominate Diana and Scott to the budget and finance committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Want to do fine art, somebody? Jeff, do you want to do fine arts or Diana? Rich and Noel?
I move to nominate Rich and Noel to the fine arts subcommittee. Give me a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
It's, it's based on the assumption that someone who shouldn't nominate themselves for the committee, although he certainly could if necessary.
You can. I mean, you can do it, but yeah. Okay, so NORCAM will do Diana.
I make a motion to nominate Diana for the NORCAM subcommittee or the NORCAM advisory board.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Finance planning?
I make a motion to nominate Scott and Rich to the finance planning team.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I make a motion to nominate Noel to the substance abuse committee.
Second.
Coalition?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? You can't oppose your own motion, no.
Nope, smiling.
I make a motion to nominate Scott as the, to the, what is it called? The special, to the special education, to, as the liaison to the special education parent advisory council.
Second.
Okay, second by Noel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I make a motion to nominate Jeff to the capital improvement planning committee. Is that a three-year appointment?
It is. It's for the, it's the whole term, so there you go.
I'll survive.
Second.
And, and just a discussion on this one. Does this one have to be approved by somebody else afterwards?
Yeah, the select board.
Yeah, and then you have to be sworn in.
So we're nominating and we'll have to get you sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we just send that over to the select board and say this is who you get?
Yeah.
Or who runs it?
We don't have to do a.
We'll have to send that, yes, to Don Callahan.
Okay.
Who's the chair, and I think he.
And then he presents.
Your honor, would you mind telling Don?
Yeah, I can tell him.
Would you mind that? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in.
Oh, I did.
Diana did. We're making it hard on you. All, all those in favor?
I know her rules.
I know.
I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? And we do not need.
Yeah, you're already on.
I'm on that one. I was sworn in. You had to get sworn in for that one, too.
Her rules are that she tries to have the same person.
Right. If you have a, if you've got your series, a series, try to do, it's just easier for, for recording.
I'm not trying to hold him.
I ignored that. I should have.
And one of us occasionally just. And one of us occasionally messes with that intentionally.
Yeah, we do.
I don't know who that was. Okay, so that is the subcommittee. Thank you, everybody. If mid-year you really hate one of them, tell us and we can possibly reassign, but we'll see.
It's, it'll be very telling, though, won't it?
Okay.
It's not a test, but it's a test.
Now, somebody needs to go through minutes, because Janine usually made all the motions a minute, so I don't know who would like to.
I have to admit, I didn't.
Stop up and do the minutes. I would like a motion to approve the April 4th, 2022 open session minutes.
I move to approve the April 4th, 2022 open session minutes.
I will second.
Okay. Anybody notice anything off on it? I did not. So on this one, you guys can vote for it, I guess, but a lot of times if you're not there, we tend to abstain. So.
Yep.
Yes. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Two. Okay, so passes three to zero. Okay. Mr. Connolly, budget update.
Yes. So in your packet this evening is the April budget report, which essentially summarizes financial activity through the, the end of April. So this is typically the, the report, budget updates that we give once per month. It breaks down financial activity based on expenses as well as payroll activity. And everything, you know, everything is continuing to be in, in good financial standing. I think we're in really good shape as we enter the last six weeks to two months of this fiscal year. To, to certainly address any of the unforeseen costs that have come up throughout the year with various maintenance items and at times, you know, special education costs that have come up that were unforeseen. And that really was because we took steps at the end of fiscal year 2021 to prepay special education tuitions, which we're allowed to do by, by law. We really were in a good, good standing to address a lot of kind of unforeseen costs as they arose. And I think really the process that we're undergoing over the, really the last couple of months of this fiscal year is we're closing down a lot of kind of open purchase orders that will be unnecessary, that we've, can, can close out. And we are certainly, at, at times, you know, repurposing some, some surplus areas to, to address some, some areas of your need, mainly the, the need to, we've kind of been in this cycle where we, we try to prepay special education tuitions with year, year-end funds, and that puts us in good standing as we approach the next, enter the next fiscal year, because that's what we're most legally able to do, to address kind of unforeseen costs as they arise. So we are in the process of doing that. This report does reflect already about $350,000 worth of prepayments of special education tuitions that we've been able to begin, begin that process of. It's not all sort of paid, but we're having cumbered that amount. And we, I just reminded, we budgeted about $150,000 during the process, so we, we've exceeded that, which has been typical. So I think we're in good, we're in good financial standing. We've been, we're able to address any costs that will come up from now until June 30th, and I, there always is some, some costs that will come up, and I think we, I expect that we're going to be able to close the year in, in good standing and set ourselves up to again be in, in good position as we begin fiscal year 23, with both the general fund as well as in our special revenue accounts are all looking in good, good standing as well. And those would be the, the accounts that we take in tuition or, or user fee costs for. We've been able to, to stay within budget and, and I think the, the rollover balances that we projected during the budget process will be able to meet or, or exceed to a, to a degree. Any questions?
I have a question for Jeff and Noel. Do you guys, are you clear on, on the prepayments of next year's special education expenses?
Mm-hmm.
That's, pause. Okay. It took me two years to figure it out, so that's why I was asking.
So we have budgeted in already as part of, so we have it budgeted in for next year's as well, then?
We, yes.
And then, I, I had a similar question on, on special education, though, because you noticed that it was a lot higher. So I don't know if, I can't remember if it's one or two things, and maybe you can explain. So I know with circuit breaker, if we have expenses that were more than expected, I think, I mean, I know kind of like the formula, but.
Yep.
Can you explain the circuit breaker and see if, if, do you think we're going to get some from this year? And is there also an extra, a couple of years, we also got extraordinary.
Correct.
Top of that. So with the additional out-of-district placements, is there any chance that we're going to get the extraordinary funds on top of that? Can you explain both of those to us?
I can. So, so certainly, we, the, the law allows us to pay up to three months of special education prepayments in advance, and we've been in a cycle where we feel like it's, because that's well within our rights to use this year's funding into, for next year's costs. We've taken those steps at the end of the year when we close out accounts that have, have surplus balances to, to put ourselves in good standing, and it's been, it's proven that, it's good solid practice. So that's kind of what we're talking, talking about when I, when I mentioned that. The special education circuit breaker sort of reimbursement account essentially funds the district for special education out-of-district tuition costs, and now they've recently added transportation cost to that as part of the Student Opportunities Act. That wasn't a part of it, and they're phasing some of those costs in per student above a certain threshold, which is about $45,000. So for any cost that exceeds that, the district receives about 75% of that amount in excess of $45,000 per student back. That goes into sort of a reimbursement revolving account, which can be used to offset those direct costs for those students, which is essentially tuition costs. So I think what Scott's referring to is if you have extraordinary costs in one year or new tuitions that go up, sometimes you get additional reimbursement, and that just helps the subsequent years offset. So we've been fortunate enough that over the last few years, we've, we've kind of worked us to get to a point where all the funding that we received this year that came in was based on last year's expenses.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're always, they're always kind of a year behind, and you have two years to spend it. So to try to take the volatility out of that equation, we, for a number of years, we worked towards a situation where we're trying to make it sort of a true reimbursement. So the funds that came in this year is the direct offset that we, that is, that was built into next year's fiscal '23 budget.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense. So we, we, we expected about $1.2 million this year in reimbursement, which was based on prior year's expenses. That is the offset in next year's budget, so we'll spend the money we've got this year and next year. The, what we're still trying to figure out, and we, and we don't do the, the circuit breaker for this year's expenses until July, because you got to close out the fiscal year and you see where you're at, and then you have, you have until July 10th to submit the information to the state. So it's actually pretty busy from July 1 to July 10th to get that information in. We, based on our expenses this year, we did not qualify for extraordinary relief, so you have to kind of commit to that, kind of like April 1st, you have to kind of know if that's the case. So you would qualify for what they refer to as extraordinary relief if your expenses in the, in this tuition area of special education is more than 25% or greater than your prior year's expenses.
Yep.
So even though we did have a couple more tuition costs this year, we didn't quite get to that 25% number that was greater than last year. I think we're.
That's good.
Which is good, yeah. So it's a good thing. So we didn't qualify for the extra relief money, which we had for a couple of years in a row, a couple of years, years back. But we also didn't, you know, have those additional costs at the same time. So that, that is, you kind of always kind of looking at those numbers. But I think it's a, we're in a good situation in the sense that we can stay here where we're, we're able to kind of take the volatility out of that equation, and we know what, we, we're going to have the money at the end of June 30th in that account. That money's going to offset our, our costs next year. And then as we close out this fiscal year and submit the money to the state, we'll know, you know, in early fall, what that reimbursement amount, final reimbursement amount will be that we'll start receiving on a quarterly basis next year, and that amount will then work into the equation when we prepare for the fiscal '24 budget. I don't see it changing significantly. I think we've been, you know, the bar's raised as our costs have gone up and so forth, which is typical what would happen. But we've been about that between 1.1 and 1.2 million dollars based on the cost that we've been incurring. And I anticipate that us will stay about that number. What's interesting is that now that transportation's part of that equation, it got a little bit delayed with the pandemic and so forth, with the states funding that full Student Opportunities Act initiative to make transportation part of that equation, but it was funded in this year's budget. So I think that number will only grow for us. And I think that will be one, the one way we will benefit from Student Opportunities Act, even though if we're not benefiting it through Chapter 70, will be through, slightly through, a little bit through, through the special education reimbursement account. So we'll just kind of watch those numbers as we go.
Thank you. I, I just know, I remember last year, the budget for this year was the fewest out-of-district placements for.
Yep.
You know, for a number of years, and so I was just wondering with the new out-of-district.
Yeah, I know, it's a good question.
We actually had gone above.
Whether we're, whether we're unusually low and therefore.
Yeah, but we were unusually low in the, in the, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or thoughts on staffing? Or sorry, on, on budget? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Daly, I see no staffing updates. Is that correct? Okay, bids and donations. Rich, you want to lead us to that?
Sure. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $50 from Andrew Graham to benefit the boys' track team at the high school.
Somebody needs a second.
Okay.
There you go. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from Chartwells to benef, uh, from the Compass Group to benefit two awarding students at the high school to be selected by the administration.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We should have thanked them while they were here, but.
Yes, we should have. Subcommittee schedule update. So whoever took athletics subcommittee, your next meeting is May 18th at 12:00 PM. Fine arts subcommittee, May 25th at 3:15 PM. Finance planning team, May 27th at 8:00 AM. Administrative report, Dr. Daly.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share, I'm sharing it on the screen. I'm not sure if you can see it. Well, we had our, excuse me, we had our DEI forum last Wednesday, as we discussed a little bit earlier. I knew Ms. Rodloff was able to be there. I know some of you wanted to attend and were unable to be there. We decided ultimately, we, we did not do that meeting hybrid, as I mentioned earlier, because we really wanted to make sure we had everyone present for this very important discussion. And I was contemplating recording it, but we decided towards the end that there were so many personal stories that were shared, that we felt it was one of those occasions that was sort of the moment itself. And that's not to say that we will not have other discussions in the future on this topic, including when I share out the overall vision for the district, where I go into detail and share. And we are planning on compiling resources and information in the slides from that night and sharing it out. But I just didn't know if there were any questions about the DEI forum, and then I'm also going to speak just for a moment about our next step with the public comment for NOPS 2025.
Any questions, thoughts? I would say thank you, Dr. Daly, for hosting it. I know that, I believe Noel was there. I know that his wife was there. You might be able to judge by the face mask why I was not able to attend in person, but appreciate you holding it and, you know, glad that it was, you know, from what I understand, it was pretty respectful and, you know, good, good discussion. So I think, I think you do an excellent job on these forums where there's very controversial at times issues, and I think you do a great job navigating those conversations. So thank you, Dr. Daly.
There was a, there was a good back and forth. There was a lot of, you know, points raised on multiple sides of, of issues, a lot of good questions that were asked, that we will compile into a ask questions document as well to share out, so we think that's helpful. But I think one of the things that I need to reiterate, a misconception is that, you know, this logo that I'm sharing with you right now, this doesn't say that a third of our curriculum is DEI. That's not what this shows. This shows that there are three big rocks. And, you know, we, we're, we are focusing on some areas of diversity, equity, inclusion, but it's not drastically rewritten, anything that we're doing. I mean, our social studies curriculum, since I was a student, always talked about race, it talked about history, and our, and our, you know, our health curriculum has always talked about appropriate topics, you know, going back to when I was a student, and we talked about, you know, sexually transmitted disease, and I went to school, you know, with the awareness around AIDS. So I mean, these things have always been around, and they've just changed with the times slightly, but we felt that there are some areas that we need to focus on, and so student support services, diversity, equity, inclusion, and teaching and learning. So this graphic that I'm sharing here, I shared really for the first time publicly at that meeting, and this graphic represents all of the indicators, and what will be released to everyone will be this document. It'll be clickable. So you'll be able to click to view everything for the 2223 school year. You'll be able to view the, everything that falls under the big rock, and you could also drill down if you want to just focus on what's under DEI 1.3 or Student Services 2.2. You'll be able to click on that and just see that over the, over the length of the plan. So that's the idea, that it's a very interactive document, and along with this, there'll be some questions and also some places to provide feedback. Everything from helping us catch typos to content, to philosophy, everything is welcome, and we, we really do. A major initiative across all three areas is community voice, and so this is part of this process. We asked the community to share their thoughts about what went into the strategy, and we want to share their thoughts about what goes into the final version, and then also feedback on how we're doing along the way. So I don't know if there's any thoughts or questions about this. The plan is to get this out in the next few weeks, Devin.
Any questions, thoughts?
I don't have any questions. I just, you know, commend you, Dr. Daly, for getting this process done through COVID or, you know, started as much as you could at the beginning of COVID, but just pushing it through. It's an important process, and I know you think it's an important process, and so it's, it's come a long way, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else in the administrative report, Dr. Daly?
I believe that's, I believe that's all for this.
Okay, no correspondence? A few, future business before I just go through a couple of very quick things. I don't know if we should put this on a, on a meeting agenda to discuss or not, but question came up about public comment, and so I think for future business, I just want to make sure everybody here understands, I've looked into this before. Mass open meeting law does not require that we have any public comment at meetings. It strongly encourages that we have public comment, and we can basically set whatever criteria we want. I think the committee or the chair basically sets that. I think for years, we've said three minutes. We usually put it up front so that people don't have to wait till 9:45 to be heard. And so personally, I think that it's worked pretty well in the past, and so I don't know if other people have other thoughts on it, but I feel like three minutes is usually a sufficient amount of time, especially considering we can't debate things that are not on the agenda. We can't bring up new ideas and start discussing them when they haven't been published, and so, you know, as much as somebody wants us to respond to things, open meeting law requires that we put on the agenda so that everybody that wants to be heard on that subject can come and be heard on that subject, and so. And so personally, I feel like three minutes and the way we've been doing it is appropriate, but, you know, just, I'm, I'm open to the committee's thoughts on this for next meeting. I mean, do we feel like this has been a fine process, or...
I would say my observation has been that we've, you know, never cut someone off at three minutes.
Correct.
That if they...
Even when you've told me they're at three minutes, or Janine has told me.
Exactly, and, and, and that's, and I think that's appropriate if you think someone's wind, you know, if they go on and on, but, but if you, if you think they're winding down anyway, that's not like, you know, three minutes of cutoff. It's a, I think the way we've been handling it seems okay.
Yes, ma'am.
About having to be resident in town?
We've talked, we've talked, I mean, there's nothing in, there's nothing in state law that says they have to be resident. There's nothing in our policy that says they have to be resident. And the only concern about having a rule like that is you would have to, I, I'd feel like you'd have to universally apply it, and so, you know, Mr. Kane came to the meeting, last meeting, and if he wanted to speak about something, he's the president of the teachers' union, he doesn't live in town, we shouldn't actually recognize him if he spoke at, at public comment. If Mr. Webster came back and wanted to talk, now he lives in Amesbury, I, I just think you get into, you know, you, you get into challenges if you do that, and so most of the time, people that don't live in North Reading don't actually care to come and comment on the North Reading School Committee meetings, and so in my five-plus years being here, I've seen it one time come, other than something like that, but, yeah. So I, I, I don't think it's a big enough problem that we do it, and I worry that, like, if a business owner wants to come and talk about, you know, something and they don't live in town, but they want to address something...
I, I just worry that we're curtailing things that we don't want to curtail, and so that would be my concern about it. Dr. Daley?
Yes, I thank you. I would just say that, you know, what is within our policy is that the chair sets the meeting requirements, and I think you've done a nice job of that. I think people have certainly had a chance to share. I love the comment tonight that people aren't speaking, but... Certainly have heard many more people speaking the last six meetings or so than we've had before. I don't think anyone's shy. We've had people coming forward, and I think anything that you would need to do to prioritize or, you know, if you need to limit it to allow more people to speak or to prioritize parents or North Reading residents, I think those things are within your, your rights, and I think you can do that as, as needed. If we have a, you know, a lot of people arriving from out of town who are dominating the conversation, I think that's part of what we can do. So I respect the way you've done it. I think it's worked well.
Yeah, and, and the other piece on that one is just that with, you, you can request us on maybe adding to an agenda. The problem is all the requests or the topics that are being brought up are not things that the school committee is actually voting on. And so, you know, somebody might say, well, you didn't allow me to put it on the agenda. Like, there's a process for things. Like, Dr. Daley explained last meeting, if you're, you're concerned about curriculum, we're not saying don't bring, raise it up. We're saying bring it to the teacher, bring it to the school principal. Don't bring it to a school committee meeting and, you know, put that teacher, teacher's curriculum before us right now. That's not the process for doing that. And so if there are longer discussions to have, they can properly be placed on an agenda so that we can prepare for it, and anybody that wants to be heard on the subject can come. Mrs. Cloney?
Sorry, I was... I just wanted to ask if there's, like, it seems to me that some of the frustration comes from the fact that we're giving people an opportunity to talk, but essentially to a wall because no one is responding to them. Is there any consideration being given to, like, tonight's meeting? I, I felt like it would have been nice to hear the school committee, like, support Dr. Daley and what he said about the necessity of DEI, but there was nothing, there was no response from anyone besides Dr. Daley on that.
And, and again, the, the challenge is it's public comment, not public debate, and that's what they always say at public meetings. We have to be careful how far we go there. And the other piece of this is, in, in my experience, you know, months ago, some of the same people were coming to meetings and commenting, and we were answering and responding, and all it did was continue the discussion going on longer and longer. And so, you know, I think we've, you know, tried to support Dr. Daley where we could, but when somebody comes and expresses their opinion about this or that, I, I feel like when we give it oxygen, it just continues to go on, and, you know, the reality is, we all have families, we all have jobs, we're approaching 10 o'clock tonight, and if we start debating back and forth with everybody who comes to a school committee meeting, we're all going to be here beyond 10 o'clock. And, you know, the point of a, of an open meeting is to be able to discuss the issues that we actually have to vote on and actually have to decide. And again, that's been the approach in the past, is, you know, if there's a specific question or something that, you know, we can easily address, great, but if it's a comment on, I don't believe this, or I think the society or America is, is changing, I, I don't know how much value will be coming from that. Noel?
I, I just wonder, and this is just like, I've observed the meetings where, you know, that you have a variety of comments, some helpful, some not. Is there, is there a way of saying, like, our standard response is like a nod, like a smile, a nod, and a thank you? I mean, maybe not if you're being insulted, but I, I don't, I don't, just because, like, you know, okay, thank you. That, that's...
I think, Scott, don't you...
No, I, I'm honestly just also asking for my own understanding of, like, what typically, you know, folks do.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's hard. I mean, people are allowed to say their thoughts, and...
Yeah.
The reality is, it's, it's good to hear where people are at, but, you know, if the same five people come every week, we know what, where they're at, and, you know, it's nice to hear, you know, like, you know, Katie Gabriello, you know, commented tonight. Like, she hasn't commented at some of the other ones. Like, it's nice to hear new people's opinions as well, just to kind of hear, but, I don't know. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, and I will say right now, if anybody in the committee wants to respond to things, you are all welcome to do that, but I just think overall in the past, it just, yeah, it just, it just, yeah, it just keeps going and going and going then, and... And eventually, eventually, it's not actually a debate, because we would be the ones cutting it off, and therefore it, it, it sort of self-perpetuates the, the thought of like, well, you're not letting me speak.
Yeah.
Because call, response, over is not really a debate, and it's not sort of a uni, it's not sort of a, an equal footing discussion.
And we've seen Dr. Daley speak up when he think, feels he needs to clarify, you know, based on something that somebody said that may not have been, that, that he may need, help, need to be clarified for the community, and that's entirely appropriate. That may, that may occur to one of us too as well, or, or ask a clarifying question if we think it's an important issue, and we just want to make sure we understand what the person is saying. I think that would be appropriate, but...
And it, I mean, and just to be clear, I mean, I believe I'm right on this. I mean, the open meeting law applies to the school committee, not to Dr. Daley.
For sure.
We, we cannot debate, we cannot debate issues that are not on the agenda. Dr. Daley can do anything he wants when he's here. You know, he's the superintendent of schools, so he can get into that. He has more leeway in responding to certain things than we do, actually, where...
At the leeway of, at, at your, at your discretion.
Correct. Correct. So...
At the chair's discretion.
And then the, the only other thing that, to, to think about for the meetings in the future, the virtual meetings, the, the governor's order runs out in middle of July. So before COVID, NORCAM was always here, so people could always watch from home, but they couldn't participate. If they wanted to come, if they wanted to speak, they had to come in and speak in person. I think one nice thing about COVID was you've been able to access some meetings this way. We have to think, and I think we're going to talk about this in finance planning team at some point, just with the select board, about if we want to be able to participate, if one of us is gone, we actually have to get the select board to approve that, so then we can do it, you know, so like if Diana is traveling...
As a policy, not, not as a one-off, but as a policy, yeah.
Correct. Like, they would have to, well, they would have to authorize us to then approve it if we wanted. We couldn't on our own say we want to keep doing this, where we can on our own say that we want to stream a Google stream for the public.
And, and provide feedback.
Correct.
For the co...
Correct. But we can't, none of us can miss the meeting and participate in a Google meet if the select board doesn't authorize it, and then we pass a policy for that. And so, so there's two components to this, and again, we don't have to decide this all today, but thinking about future business, number one is, do we have an interest in seeing if the select board is interested in allowing that? If we wanted to be able to allow remote participation if one of us is traveling? And then the second part is, we see all the technological challenges, you know, of, of participating this way, and I think the one concern I have is when somebody wants to participate and they're at home, and then they can't hear because the computer goes silent, or they can't hear the presentation, do we want to keep doing a Google meets? I mean, NORCAM, you can always listen to, NORCAM always sounds great, and so I, I just don't know. And I don't think we have to necessarily decide that today.
Right.
I think it's something that maybe over the summer when we set our goals, we can think about, so... I mean, I will personally say that it, it will be useful for me, knowing that my travel likely will increase over time as things open up. That's more of a personal thing, but I also don't think, I think it adds an option, I don't think it removes an option from, from people to participate. They can always come, even if there are remote options. So to me, yes, there are technical challenges, but it doesn't remove the ability of someone to participate in person. That's just my two cents.
And we can debate it, and, and once, once we hear how you're voting, I'll decide if I want you there. It's getting...
Play your game.
I just think it's something we can think about for, you know, when, when we set our, our goals this summer, really think about that, because the technology has been challenging at times, too. So, Dr. Daley?
I think we should definitely revisit. I know this is one of the school committee goals as well. We certainly could make more adjustments, but the hardest part, for those that have joined us more recently, is when we're in hybrid, trying to do what we did tonight. That's what's so complicated. When we were fully virtual, it was working a lot more smoothly. So I'm wondering whether we, you know, even if we just have it that people are watching NORCAM, I believe the NORCAM stream is, well, it's not live necessarily, but maybe that's what we do, or something like that, where then they're watching that at home, and then they could join virtually or something, you know? Because what gets so complicated is all these sharings and permissions, and when I have to show a video through a video, or, you know, it's trying to make the whole, the virtual presentation as good as the in-person, I think is where, where it's really becoming challenging. Trying to run two different things at once.
I mean, front, front, front...
And for, for us to have to do that and not be focused on the meeting itself and more focused on logistics is also problematic. But I, I would, my opinion about the ability for us to have a member go remote, I think we should definitely try to add that in.
Yeah, so the, so the...
So the justice...
I believe they're usually live, and so, you know, it's just, it's when we used to go to, like, the little school, they wouldn't be live from the little school, you know, from this conference room for like a budget workshop. Again, we, we can discuss more about it in the future. I'm kind of conflicted. I was one that was very much in favor at first, but part of it is just getting frustrated by it, too, and...
Yeah, it's unfortunate, it's, it's unfortunate that there isn't a, sort of out-of-the-box, I mean, there probably is for the right money, out-of-the-box solution for it.
Yeah.
But...
It's just challenging, and like, again, I felt bad that we couldn't hear the kids today very well.
Yep.
You know, that was a little frustrating, and I don't know.
Was there a reason why they chose to do remote as opposed to, like, the kids from the batch game?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I think they did it before, and they liked it that way, and...
Okay.
I don't know. They heard you were coming. They heard, they heard it's far too weighted in favor of the batch elder now. Were you in the batch, too?
I was, yeah.
It's four to one batch now, but, okay. Nothing more. Oh, future business. Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Daley.
I have a couple of things on the future business.
Yes, go ahead.
So, and I just, you know, my intention tonight, and I should have reminded you, I, I would have thought you may have listened at your own stations to the hood thing being virtual, and it was almost more like a virtual meeting. I think if, if what happened was you tried to listen through the, the, the computer, that, I was hoping that people would have had headphones or something, and I should have made that more clear when they decided to go virtual, so I'm sorry about that confusion. The, the two items that are coming up, the June town meeting, I just wanted some clarification about what kind of a timeframe did you want before that meeting? And then for the, for the next one, if there's anything you'd like me to pass along to the schools about their school improvement plan presentation, so...
Okay, so for, for town meeting, I mean, just for an idea, is everybody planning on being at town meeting? Are you able to be at a town meeting? June 6? June 6th? June 6. Not sure. Just so that, just so that we know, we'll have a quorum at least. Noel, you think he'll be there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
He'll be there, I'll be there, okay.
My husband will be there.
I've got a work event I know is going on then, but I'm not sure whether I'm participating. Okay.
It's a date.
So we'll at least have a quorum there, because one thing, there, there's a couple things we need to take votes on, and we usually would do it right before. And we do need to talk a little bit about the forest committee. It's just trying to put trails on land that will go over school. On land as well. So if, I, I would say, Dr. Daley, I'd say probably a half hour before is probably sufficient, but...
Okay.